Call this meeting to order? Need a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Natalie? Roll call? Oh, you seem far away there.
I don't think this is working, sorry.
President, Mr. Nishi?
I am here.
Vice President, Mr. Noyola? Clerk, Ms. Yokoyama Bowie?
Present.
Board Member, Ms. McAtton?
Present.
Board Member, Ms. Madota?
Present.
Board Member, Dr. Rios?
Present.
Board Member, Mrs. Yu?
Here.
Thank you.
We need to have the sound modulated here, right?
That was loud.
Clerk Bowie, can you do the pledge of allegiance for us?
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. Well, it feels weird. I'm facing this way, but the audience is that way. But I wanted to start, I know this is a little bit out of the news cycle, but I want to have a prayer. A prayer for the families who've lost their most precious in the shooting in that state. But I don't want to just call for a prayer. I want to call for something more than that. I want to cite from a wise man, James, and he wrote many years ago, "What does it profit if someone says that he has faith, but he does not have works? Can faith save him? If a brother or sister is destitute and one of you says, 'Depart in peace, be warmed and filled,' but you do not give him the things which are needed, what does it profit? Faith by itself, if it does not have works, is dead." We need prayer, that's true, but we also need courage for action. Maybe it's counseling, maybe that's the action that's taken. Maybe we find ways to reduce the tools of mass killing to persons who are in pain and suffering. Maybe that's the action. But we need to take action. Hope is not a strategy that addresses the pain that these families are facing. So I'm not going to ask for a moment of silence, because that happens too often and we just say, "We've done our job." I'm saying I want a moment of silence and a promise followed by action. I believe that faith and trust and love are key. If we love our children, we love our families, we will act to prevent harm from happening to them again in the future. So my request, and I've seen this at places, is for you to hug your loved ones, even the ones that you kind of like. Hug them. Show your love. Whether it's a hug, or buying a cup of coffee, or something, but after that, please take action. Whatever that is. I want to commend this board for being very active in everything that you've been part of the community. Going out there to all the back-to-school nights, being part of, witnessing of these events that we have here. It's very important, because it's part of what makes us relevant. To the public, school board members are largely volunteers. We have professional lives, and we go out, and you know, sometimes we get asked about school issues, and we don't have the power to change a grade. We don't have the power to get you into a school, and we decide just policy, right? And we know how policy affects students, and that is what is important about what we do here today. Today's a little bit different format. Instead of the regular format we have, we're going to have the public ask questions for about 15 minutes. If we can answer the question as part of the presentation, we'll let you know right away that we can answer that question as part of the presentation. If it's not covered by the presentation, we'll let you know that as well. And if we can answer that question, we'll answer it. And if we have to get back to you with a more in-depth answer, we will do that as well. It will be part of our FAQs later on, because I think that sometimes the questions that are asked here, are the questions that people have on TV, and they're wondering, "What is the answer to that question?" So we will put that on our FAQs. After the specific questions, so the question is for you to ask real questions, not to give speeches. We will have a presentation, and then we'll have public comments. Public comments is a place where you can not just ask questions, but give us your opinions. We will consider those opinions, and then we will have our own discussion as to what our plans are. Tonight, there's no action item. The only action that we can take tonight to put an item on our agenda, if there's no motion, then there's no action. Very simple. So with that, I'd like to give it to the superintendent.
Thank you. So this evening, we were going to start with questions that board members may have, our public may have. You are welcome to line up and ask your question at the podium, or if you prefer, we have these little question cards, maybe you just want to put your question in the box to be part of the FAQs, but the idea was to solicit the questions that really should be part of an FAQ in the big picture of the data and what we're looking at. So at this point, we'll open the mic for anyone who would have questions. Maybe it's a question you're hoping will be answered tonight, and we will chart those, and some of them may be answered in the presentation, and others may require more information, and we would answer that in an FAQ. So I now open the floor. You can see Mr. Smith, if anyone has questions they'd like to ask.
Break the ice. And this is the question time.
Hello, my name is Robyn Rico. I'm a parent at Ferguson, you probably all recognize me by now. God, I feel totally unprepared for these questions. And I sat with Francisco, who's not here, and we talked about all my questions. So when considering closing schools, are we looking at transportation with parents? Most parents in Sarito's have access to cars and can drive their kids back and forth to school. Where Ferguson parents, we're heavily walking community. So there's a 23-minute walk to Hawaiian Elementary. One of our parents did that. Another thing was, have we looked at possibly consolidating the school board offices? We can put those on a campus, or even if not this building, but what about consolidating Tracy into another high school? Or the adult education? We have two buildings there that could get moved onto school campuses. And we have lots of bungalows, they're taxpayer properties, so they shouldn't be used by the community instead of just sitting there, not doing anything. So maybe just being a little bit more creative with how we purpose what we have. I might have more questions later.
Well, you can stay up there.
And there's some hearts on the media, if you want to add some.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So let's go to the first question, transportation. Is that going to be part of the presentation, or is that part of a subsequent answer that we can provide?
That would be a subsequent answer.
Okay, good. And that's the first time I've heard of that one, so that's a good question. That will be something that we answer later on?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And what was the third question that she had?
The question was about consolidating Tracy or the adult schools. Part of that might be answered tonight, and part of that would be answered in the FAQ.
Okay, thank you.
And then, in terms of district office space, I think the question is more, are there other things we could consider?
Okay.
So I don't know if it'll be answered, per se, but we can respond in the FAQ.
I'm kind of curious as to whether she means that the district office would move to a school? Okay, that was the idea.
So can I make a comment on that?
No, okay.
Okay. I think there was a school district in Huntington Beach that did that. Motion View did that. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, it's going to be pretty short.
Please.
Okay, my name is Sandy Mercado Navares, and my question is, as part of the process for pending school closures or consolidations, do school board members plan on going to each site to speak with staff regarding the, you know, just giving them information, getting their questions, getting an up-close assessment of how they're feeling and where they're at? Giving it a personal spin, rather than just data? So that's my question. Will that be part of the process?
That's a great question, as part of the process. Okay.
Hi, Catherine Pasqual. When looking at the numbers in the presentation, I see a big gap between the TK numbers and the kindergarten numbers, and so I know enrollment is a problem, but what are we doing to accommodate adding additional spaces? Because TK classrooms do take up additional space, they need additional facilities, they need special training, so that we can grow our numbers there. It looks like we have room to grow by about 400 TK'ers if we should have the same number of TK and kinders right now. So is that something we can work on as we are looking at ways to grow enrollment?
Thank you. I don't know if we'll answer that tonight, but we can answer that in the FAQ.
We need prayer, that's true. But we also need courage for action. Maybe it's counseling. Maybe that's the action that's taken. Maybe we find ways to reduce the tools of mass killing to persons who are in pain and suffering. Maybe that's the action. But we need to take action. Hope is not a strategy that addresses the pain that these families are facing. So I'm not going to ask for a moment of silence because that happens too often and we just say, "We've done our job." I'm saying I want a moment of silence and a promise followed by action. I believe that faith and trust and love are key. If we love our children, we love our families, we will act to prevent harm from happening to them again in the future. So my request, and I've seen this at places, is for you to hug your loved ones, even the ones that you kind of like. Hug them. Show your love. Whether it's a hug or buying a cup of coffee or something, but after that, please take action. Whatever that is. I want to commend this board for being very active in everything that you've been part of the community. Going out there to all the back-to-school nights, being part of, witnessing of these events that we have here. It's very important because it's part of what makes us relevant. To the public, school board members are largely volunteers. We have professional lives and we go out and, you know, sometimes we get asked about school issues and we don't have the power to change a grade. We don't have the power to get you into a school. And we decide just policy, right? And we know how policy affects students. And that is what is important about what we do here today. Today's a little bit different format. Instead of the regular format we have, we're going to have the public ask questions for about 15 minutes. If we can answer the question as part of the presentation, we'll let you know right away that we can answer that question as part of the presentation. If it's not covered by the presentation, we'll let you know that as well. And if we can answer that question, we'll answer it. And if we have to get back to you with a more in-depth answer, we will do that as well. It will be part of our FAQs later on because I think that sometimes the questions that are asked here are the questions that people have on TV and they're wondering, "What is the answer to that question?" So we will put that on our FAQs. After the specific questions, so the question is for you to ask real questions, not to give speeches. We will have a presentation and then we'll have public comments. Public comments is a place where you can not just ask questions, but give us your opinions. We will consider those opinions. And then we will have our own discussion as to what our plans are. Tonight, there's no action item. The only action that we can take tonight to put an item on our agenda. If there's no motion, then there's no action. Very simple. So with that, I'd like to give it to the superintendent.
Thank you. So this evening, we were going to start with questions that board members may have, our public may have. You are welcome to line up and ask your question at the podium. Or if you prefer, we have these little question cards. Maybe you just want to put your question in the box to be part of the FAQs. But the idea was to solicit the questions that really should be part of an FAQ in the big picture of the data and what we're looking at. So at this point, we'll open the mic for anyone who would have questions. Maybe it's a question you're hoping will be answered tonight. And we will chart those. And some of them may be answered in the presentation and others maybe require more information and we would answer that in an FAQ. So I now open the floor. You can see Mr. Smith, if anyone has questions they'd like to ask.
Break the ice. And this is the question time.
Hello, my name is Robyn Rico. I'm a parent Ferguson, you probably all recognize me by now. God, I feel totally unprepared for these questions. And I sat with Francisco, who's not here, and we talked about all my questions. So when considering closing schools, are we looking at how, like transportation with parents? Most parents in Cerritos have access to cars and can drive their kids back and forth to school. Where Ferguson parents, we're heavily walking community. So there's a 23-minute mile, or 20-minute walk to Hawaiian Elementary. One of our parents did that. Another thing was, have we looked at possibly consolidating, like, the school board offices? We can put those on a campus. Or even if not this, this building, but what about consolidating Tracy into another high school? Or the adult education? We have two buildings there that could get moved onto school campuses. And we have lots of bungalows, they're taxpayer properties, so they shouldn't be used by the community instead of just sitting there, not doing anything. So maybe just being a little bit more creative with how we purpose what we have. I might have more questions later.
Well, you can stay up there.
And, and you're welcome.
So let's go to the first question, transportation. Is that going to be part of the presentation? Or is that part of a subsequent answer that we can provide?
That would be a subsequent answer.
Okay, good. And the school, that's the first time I've heard of that one, so that's a good question. That will be something that we answer later on?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And what was the third question that she had?
The question was about consolidating Tracy or the adult schools. Part of that might be answered tonight and part of that would be answered at a subsequent, in the FAQ.
Okay, thank you.
And then in terms of district office space, I think the question is more, are there other things we could consider?
Okay.
So I don't know if it'll be answered per se, but we can respond in the FAQ.
I'm kind of curious as to whether she means that the district office would move to a school? Okay, that was the idea.
So can I make a comment on that?
No, okay.
Okay. I think there was a school that, school district in Huntington Beach that did that. Ocean View did that. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, it's going to be pretty short.
Please. Come on up.
Okay, my name is Sandy Mercado Navares. And my question is, as part of the process for pending school closures or consolidations, do school board members plan on going to each site to speak with staff regarding the, you know, just giving them information, getting their questions, getting an up-close assessment of how they're feeling and where they're at? Giving it a personal spin rather than just data? So that's my question. Will that be part of the process?
That's a great question, as part of the process. Okay.
Hi, Catherine Pasqual. When looking at the numbers in the presentation, I see a big gap between the TK numbers and the kindergarten numbers. And so I know enrollment is a problem. But what are we doing to accommodate adding additional spaces? Because TK classrooms do take up additional space, they need additional facilities, they need special training so that we can grow our numbers there. It looks like we have room to grow by about 400 TKers if we should have the same number of TK and kinders right now. So is that something we can work on as we are looking at ways to grow enrollment?
Thank you. I don't know if we'll answer that tonight, but we can answer that in the FAQ.
So the question is regarding space for TK and Kinder.
Hello. Thank you, the board, President Nishi, for having this study session. I think this is what parents at Stowers and many other parents really wanted. So we really appreciate the time and effort that you're taking for doing this. One of the questions we had is that one of our parents in the Stowers, the Stowers group, she is a administrator actually for a charter school. And she sent, I think, the board, and I'm not sure exactly who in the board got an email or if she sent it all, but she provided some novel ideas in terms of ways that the district can raise money. And I know, you know, there are a lot of things that we can present that would be great, be wonderful, that may be what-ifs, right? But my question is how, because in the last board meeting that when we were all here, some, something that we heard a lot of was, "Let's think of novel ideas, let's think of new things, let's think out of the box." As we provided things that are out of the box, how much change is the district willing to look at those proposals? And this is not, you know, this is not a knock on the board at all. I mean, I'm pragmatic. I know there's only so much the board can do. There's only so many realistic things the district can do, right? Because there's a lot of, there's just a lot of moving things. It's very hard to be, to make changes immediately. But what kind of changes are you open to actually making? In terms of what kind of suggestions can you accommodate? Or you're willing to look into? Because again, any proposal that requires money in terms of looking at new things, because I think there has been some great ideas that our parents have proposed. But again, we don't know if the board and the district is open to that, whether that's even realistic or it's just not something that, you know, you've looked into in the past and said, "This is even a non-starter." Or it's just something you're not looking into. And again, this is not a knock on the board or the district. This is just something, we want to know if we can present stuff and the stuff that we presented, if the board can take a look at that. That's it, thank you.
Wait, what specific question? Like, what specific?
Oh, so one thing that she, that she presented, apologies if it wasn't sent to you. One was a, so she's in a charter school, right? And I'm not an education, I'm not an educator, administrator, or education attorney. So apologies if I'm butchering what she's saying. But basically, one of the things that she has recommended was, in the summer, what, she worked for Anaheim, teaching summer school. And so what had happened was offering some sort of virtual academy. As we have learned during our research, a lot of the districts, not just ABC, but other districts, are losing a lot of children from, to homeschooling. So I know that's, you know, sort of a difficulty. And I know it kind of goes against what the, it's kind of inconsistent with, you know, with the district, right? Because you want in, you want kids sitting in person. But what she had proposed was that we would grow the virtual academy that was provided during COVID, but that, you know, expand that so that there could be a second, you know, a secondary track. And that could generate additional income. Again, this is, these are not my ideas, so I'm probably not doing it any justice. So I'll ask her again to send it. But if she, you know, provided several ideas, just, you know, different ways for the district to, the district to raise funds and raise money. So I'll have her send it again. So apologies if you were not one of the people who received it, so that's it.
Not other, not everybody here's got to hear that, particularly the public as well.
Oh, okay, okay. So well, yeah, so again, again, that was not my idea, so I certainly not giving it any justice. But I think there was, you know, certain, because she is an administrator for a charter school. So there's a lot of research and thought that she put into it in terms of, what has charter schools have done that maybe the district can do in terms of creating sort of like a virtual, you know, a virtual academy? Or something that, you know, does not necessarily, instead of losing students to homeschool and to other charter schools, maybe provide some sort of access for them to still, they're still in the district. And that may generate fund. I think another proposal she did was a virtual academy during the summer, like a summer school. And that, and I think she worked with Anaheim, with the Anaheim School District with that. And I think, you know, in her words, that generated a lot of money. Again, I'm not doing it any justice. And I'll ask her to circulate it and, you know, if she wants to then send it in the public. So, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I think we actually had a virtual academy previously. Yes. After COVID, I think we had a, a.
Yeah, we had a virtual academy post-COVID.
And the.
Enrollment declined.
Enrollment declined in that? Okay. But they're thinking about summer school virtual academy? That might be the. Okay, I didn't see the email, so, okay.
Good evening, I'm Carla Santa Cruz, a community member and retired ABC. I have some questions, but I just wanted to mention, I know hope is not a strategy, but I hoped for a study session and here we are. Thank you. So my questions begin following up. Are you considering the previous suggestions that have been provided from public input at the previous opportunity in June? So that's my.
Can you be specific, though, so we can answer the question?
Well, I know that I wrote in a five-page or six-page list of suggestions and I heard that there were many others. And then I looked back at the notes from the minutes and it did list specific things from different community members. So later on, when it's my turn to give input, again, I want to know, do I need to try to repeat everything in a minute? Or will that already be on the table? So basically, that's the first question.
I'm not sure if that will be answered or not. You'll have to see if anything.
Fair enough, I just wanted to ask, okay. My second question is, I know that there's been outside written input from a former superintendent that was sent to you today. And I wanted to know if you received it or if that will be considered. I know it went to the administrators and the board from Mr. Ronaldo Santa Cruz.
Yes, I can say I did.
I don't know if we'll answer all of his questions or not in the session.
But just, you know, I just wanted to put it on the table since it's a study session, just because this is an opportunity to provide input, so I wanted to check on that. And then also, in your discussion, will you consider school consolidation for the six, eight configurations separately? Or will this be part of the presentation?
All of the information will be presented.
Okay.
What the board chooses to consider would be put on an agenda item. So I can't answer that.
Thank you.
And I haven't seen the presentation yet myself, so.
Okay.
That's why I can't answer the question.
And then also, as you're considering, are you, I saw the data from the last presentation. And regarding the data, are you considering the additional 170 out-of-district permits that are 20 more than last year to Stowers? And the additional intra-district permits as consideration when you're looking at making any changes that may impact our schools?
So again, we'll talk through the data, but the board has to decide on direction.
Okay.
So we share information, but they discuss and make decisions about where they want to go.
Fair enough, thank you.
Is it in the presentation, though? Okay, all right.
Hi, I'm Sandy Lawless, resident of ABC Unified and also a previous employee. And my question goes along with the homeschooling. Do we have any idea how many students are actually homeschooled before we pursue that type of venue?
I don't believe that would be part of tonight's presentation, but we can make that part of FAQs.
Okay, so do you know the num, is that something that you can access even? I don't know.
It might be very difficult.
Okay.
We'd have to go through county and the state.
Do we have a rough idea as to ratios, maybe? No? We have to go through, how would we get the data? I want to ask, because I'm trying to study.
So we know we have a group of homeschooling parents that work with our adult school. We would start there to see what their connections are. But we would really have to hope that homeschoolers have connected into state-approved programs so that we could track addresses in some way. It would, it would be a little bit complicated, but we'd have to look to see is there a market?
Is the number in the thousands?
Oh, no.
In the half of thousands? Okay, beyond that, we don't know. Sorry, sometimes. Go ahead.
That seems like a lot of kids could get lost in the loophole if there's no way to track our resident students.
I don't think she said they can't track. I think she says it's going to have a challenge. There's not one place there to find it.
Awesome. Okay, so I was looking at the busing report. And is there a way that we can get like numbers on how many kids actually utilize the busing system? Because it seems that, like to go to Whitney High School, there's 13 stops. And I'm super grateful we finally have a stop for Artesia High School. That was super needed and I think it's been well utilized thus far. But that might be a good place to like limit extra spending. And since we talked about charter schools, has anybody considered bringing a charter school into the community? Apparently, they really like are sought after, people love them. I don't, I'd prefer to just keep our school, but it could be an option. And the other thing I was questioning was, has anyone considered the social-emotional impact for moving our sixth graders into middle school? They're the kids who were in Kinder and first grade for COVID. So they already struggle with that. So it, switching that just concerns me that they're going to have another, ugh, here we go. Because the staffing's going to change, you know, all of those kind of things. And is there a report that shows converting Stowers into a middle school is even cost-effective?
Okay, so let's start with the first question. Busing, can we get the busing data?
We'll see data, but, and we can explain the process, I think, tonight.
We have busing numbers?
Yes.
Okay, we might not have in this report, but we have busing numbers. Okay, charter school, it wasn't clear as to what that really meant, but.
That's a, we'll have to respond to that in the FAQ.
Yeah, I don't understand how that would help because that would take away from our enrollment, not add to our enrollment, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Like, how would we even do a char, we wouldn't do the charter, somebody else would do the charter?
That, well, there's different ways.
Competition for ourselves.
Yeah, at this point, we can respond to that in the FAQ.
Okay, all right, sorry.
That's okay.
And socioeconomic support for sixth graders?
Social-emotional support. We can talk about that a little bit tonight, but we can respond more fully in the FAQ.
Okay. And the last one was, oh, I just wrote "report." What was the last question? Oh, yeah, I don't think we've done that yet.
No, at this point, the district would not move forward on anything like that unless we know what the board wants to do. Once we know where the board is going, then we can cost out things.
There's no direction for that, so we wouldn't cost that out because there's no direction for it.
And there would be an expense to doing.
Right. Okay.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for convening the special study session. My name is Michael Koo, I've spoken previously on behalf of Stowers. Couple of questions I just thought of is one, I'm not sure if you're looking at the previous data from the study, but if it's possible, I'd like to ask if it's possible to look at all the new recency data and evaluate all schools equally rather than just the four that were put on the block last time? Let's take a look at everything. Two, if we can evaluate it not the same way that things were looked at as a package last time, it doesn't have to be a package deal. I think individual decisions can be made individually on their own merits. Does not have to be looked at as a package for decision-making.
Okay, is there a question in there?
Right, those are two questions, right? Can we look at it not as a package?
Okay, all right.
Instead individually? And two, can we look at all the schools instead of just the four that were identified last time?
So the data for all the schools will be in this evening and you'll be able to see that and it's in the report. And in terms of the actual sites and what decisions are made, that's all up to the board and how they want to move forward?
So one of the suggestions I made last time is, per the consultant, they considered border schools to be off-limits because they thought that would be something that a neighboring district would poach our kids. And at least on the east side, I made the point last time, it's an industrial complex. So I would ask the board not to worry about that, that all schools, even on borders, can be considered on the east side. And then lastly, any other financial kind of fundraising? I can say, at least for Stowers, we have our Stowers Foundation, which is, has a great plan right now for this year. We're planning to be raising about $2,000 a month in donations for the school. And that will only grow as our tutoring and language immersion program is grows. Because right now, it's only K1, 2, as that program grows, so will the fundraising projections as well. So not just that, so I can only speak to Stowers because that's what I know of. But if we can look at outside opportunities for fundraising, that will help our financial crisis.
Thank you very much. So these will be questions. We're going to have a public comment section after that where we can.
Just questions.
Yeah, right now, it's just questions.
I'm sorry, I just had one more question. In terms of facility use, has our, is there any prohibition right now? I know Stowers is, you know, is on the block, it's still in consideration. Is there any prohibition right now in terms of Stowers being able to purchase, you know, furniture, certain supplies for the school? Because my, 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 one of my youngest is actually in kindergarten. And the furniture, they were not allowed. And as you could see, it's, we have robust kindergarten classes, four classes, three immersion, one non-immersion. My child is in a non-immersion. And we were unable to get furniture for it. So if you go in there, I mean, the teachers have made it work. You know, the kids don't know, they're fine, they're all happy. However, you'll see that the furniture is a mismatch of just random furniture that was found. And when teachers were asked, were asked to purchase furniture, they were told, "Well, Stowers is closing, so we're not getting any furniture." So I'm not sure where this message is coming from, but I just want to make sure that, you know, if, since Stowers, as of this moment, is not determined to close, that, you know, we want to make sure that the school is able to purchase any supplies that it does need because, again, we have, we're still open. So that's my question, is there any prohibition from Stowers getting supplies that it needs at the moment?
So there will be information in the presentation about school budgets, but I don't think that will answer your question. I would say your question is probably best answered by talking to the principal to see what is needed.
Our principal deferred to the district and said it was a district decision.
Well, then we'll work with her.
Okay.
Thank you.
That will require additional research, I think.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, one last question here? All right, great.
Yeah, Pablo Vega, a quick question. I know that one of the slides is going to be on Tracy's low enrollment. My question is, do we know why we have low enrollment? Second question would be, is there other schools that students can be attending Tracy that are deficient in credit? And have we looked into why they're not at Tracy? And I guess those are my two major questions before, and I'm not sure, just, I saw it on the slide, so I wanted to ask. Thank you.
I think you'll have those questions answered in the presentation tonight.
Great. So this is an experiment, we never did it like this before. But I thought it's better than a cold, you know, we don't get to answer their questions, right? So at least there's a little bit of interaction. The next section, we'll have a presentation by Mr. Nguyen and provide us a lot of information. After that, the public, again, gets to comment and give us their opinion about the presentation that they just heard. Take it away.
Thank you, President Nishi, can you hear me okay? Thank you so much. The presentation tonight was presented by myself and Dr. Carol Castro. I do have a partner in helping me with this presentation. Thank you, Dr. Castro. Good evening. How about now? All right. Thank you so much for allowing me to present the data. Most, if not all, the information in here are requested by the board. So we've asked you to send us the questions. So we've asked you to send us the questions, and we tried to put the information in the presentation for you. So of course, do you have any additional question for us? We'll try to answer them tonight as we go along. So this information is as of August 28, 2025. So this is last Thursday, as we put the presentation together. This is the most current information, right? That's as of that same day. So on August 28, the district enrolled 17,196 students, compared to 17,552 last year. But we declined about 356 students, as you can see here. And of the 17,196, 2749 are out of the districts. So about 16% of the district's enrollment are out of the districts. So this page gave you, again, through August 28, the detailed breakdown by school and by grade level of our enrollment. Right, so if you can see across Aloha has 262 students, and you can read it down, right? Total elementary school is 8801. Total middle school is 2757. High school is 5638. So there's a total of 17,196. So when you try to analyze this this page alone, there's two point of information that that should be of interest to to anyone looking at this, right? Our senior grade is at 1427. So after this year, they will leave us, right? Join the workforce, go to college. But we are enrolling about 1,024 in kindergarten. I always point this out, right? If you lose 1,400 students and you enroll 1,000 students, there'll be a net loss naturally of 400 students, right? A point was made by one of the public members was our TK is at 627, right? So in theory, the total population we can enroll is about 1,000, right, the same as K. So only 627 decided to come to to our school system. So there's there's some work we can do there to to advertise the program and have families that enroll their four-years-old, right? There would be those that will just won't enroll, but that's where we can grow, because in theory, we can get 1,000 TK. That that that's a capacity. But at the end of the day, you know, if you lose 147027 and you gain 1,000, there'll be a 400 students naturally decline. I'm just looking at this data. So from this point, we know that we will continue to decline, number one. Number two, there's room that we can, you know, enroll additional TK. This is the first year that TK program is in full implementation. For the past five years, it was a phasing. Every three months, you enroll. Every year, you enroll an additional three months of of students. But this year, the law is that students, if you turn four by September 1st, you eligible to enroll in a TK program. So that's that's the information on this page. So this is also at the request by the board, right? You break down the resident students compared to school of choice and intra-district permit, out-of-district permit to get your total enrollment. So again, reading across, using Aloha as an example, 215 resident students attend Aloha, 34 school of choice and intra-district permit, 13 out-of-district, or total of 262. So we're gonna compare that with last year enrollment of 302. Aloha has a decline of 40 students in the one year alone. Compared to the capacity, as we were asked for, the capacity by school and the utilization percentage, and that's on this page here. The reading across, you can see school by school, the breakdown between residents, intra, inter, compared to last year, compared to the capacity. Okay, so I would have that for elementary and the middle school. So if you want to eyeballing it, so the schools with the largest decline at elementary is Aloha with 40 students less than last year. And we have a school with net gain of Leo had a net gain of nine, and Stowers have a net gain of eight. So if you want to look at that also compared to last year. There's there's a piece of data here that was asked to the in the out-of-dist- out-of-district permit at Stowers is at 168 because of their dual enrollment, dual immersion program. And this is a net gain of 18 students compared to last year. If you look at the last year information, it was 150. So that is a school with a net gain of out-of-the-district permit because of the dual enrollment program. Dual immersion program, I apologize. So moving along, so I want to spend some time on this chart, because this is, there's a lot of good information on this chart, and it's also providing to you the transfer out rate by school, meaning that what is the percentage of resident students that have decided of parents to attend other schools within ABC and not the resident schools? So again, using Aloha, just because they're the first one, right? 262 total students, 215 of the residents. And if you're reading across, where's say number Aloha here? If you look at, go all the way down, here, say 396, that is their total resident students. I want to make sure this 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 information makes sense. 215 families decide to keep their students at Aloha out of 396. So the rest of them would go to the other schools within the district. So 24 of them attend BRAC from from Aloha, four goes to Burbank, 24 goes to Carver, three go to Cerritos, and you just read down. And you know that for that particular school, you know, where the students are attending. And you can read the same thing with BRAC, right? 316 resident students attending BRAC out of 435. So the bottom number give you the total resident students without any school of choice. If everyone were to attend their homeschool 100%, that's your bottom number. You would get 396 from Aloha, 472 from BRAC, 402 from Burbank.
Where are you looking?
At the bottom. So I want to pause to make sure that the data makes sense to the board members. Okay? So at the same time, going across is the gain.
There's a question.
So so yeah, so let me finish my thought, and then you can... So Aloha again, right? 34 are from other schools within the district, right, whether it's school of choice or intra-district permit. And going across, you can see there, two from BRAC, two from Burbank, 12 from Melbourne. Those are the students that our homeschools are different than Aloha, but they choose to attend Aloha. But that's reading across. Reading down is their home students. So just you go vertical and horizontal. Okay?
So the question you had about here is capacity? That's current capacity in terms of the buildings that are currently there, right?
Yes, so the capacity, we can we computed right here based on an average. So it's not, you know, absolute. So we take an average of 25 students per classroom for elementary school and 28 students per classroom at secondary. So in theory, you know, four, five, and six at at elementary can can house up to 32 students per per contract. So you can actually have more students than the capacity depends on where they land. This is just the average.
Right.
Okay.
And it's not if we put like other buildings there, that doesn't include that.
No, this is of the existing current building.
Current building.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions on this page before I move along? There's a lot of information or helpful useful information that was requested by the board on this page, right? What, you know, what does school of choice, the impact of school of choice, this page tell you that story? All right? So if you look at this page again, the schools with the highest resident students would be Melbourne. At, I'm sorry, no, Nemus, at 529. Right?
The bottom.
Yeah, at the bottom. I don't have the red thing.
All of the residents stayed and didn't do school of choice or anything else, we'd have 529 at that school.
And then if you had look at the school with the lowest residents, we can solve it. Okay? I'll move along.
So Aloha has a...
So if you look at the transfer rate again, Aloha is at 46%. Awar is at 52%. Those are the high numbers. And this is the same set of information for middle school and high school. A factor here is because of the Whitney factor. So, you know, families apply to Whitney and receive and 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 get accepted into Whitney. So for example, if you look at here, at Carmenita, 664 students, out of that is 380 are residents, 165 are school of choice and intra-district permit, and 119 from outside the district. Ross actually has the largest outside of the district student. Again, looking at Carmenita, 380 students attending their homeschool out of 459, because a big chunk of it, 71 students, go to Whitney. So if you look at the high school, again, at the bottom, how you the home resident students, right? Artesia has 1617 resident students. Among them, 1163 decided to go to Artesia, and the rest goes to other schools. Right, so one of the question was asked is, if if the board, if we were to go through the six, seven, and eight middle school configuration, would that be capacity? We'll be losing school of choice, or we'll be losing out-of-district permit? And this this will show you that we still be able to do that and still have sufficient or similar number allotted for school of choice and also out-of-district permit. We get about 600, 200 per grade level at the middle school. So this chart shows you that they still allow for that, so we're not losing any potential out-of-district permit. So if we were to do this in 27, 28, right? This is the first columns here are their homeschools, their resident schools, right? Carmenita will be at 407 students without any school of choice or out-of-district permit. And if you add about 160 school of choice in total and 150 per grade limit, they'll be at 717. A little bit over capacity, but they can handle it. And the same thing with all the other schools. So this chart shows you that if the board decides to do this, there's still capacity room for school of choice. We may have to adjust it year by year. And there's also capacity for out-of-district. And as time goes by, as you move further out, you know, we declining more, there'll be more school of choice and more permits. Am I pacing okay? Thank you so much. All right. So there was a question being asked about if we're, what if we were to do K8 configuration, what does it look like? So the first two columns there is that if you were to do K at Ferguson and Hawaiian, right? You would split the 150 students right now attending FEDI at 75 students per school, seven and eight. So it's still within the capacity, way under capacity if we were to do that. And the third role is that if you were just to make Ferguson a K8, do they have the capacity to take the the additional 300 students from FEDI? And and clearly, they do, right? You would have to reconfigure the school, right, to fit for the middle school. But at 725 capacity, Ferguson can take all the students from FEDI if if the board choose to to put it there. And again, this is just strictly from a capacity and a number perspective. Dr. Castro will talk about the program perspective, impact of the different provision. Another question was asked is that what if you put K8 at FEDI? And 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 move them from Ferguson? As you can see there, you you have the capacity to do that also. So here, for K8 configuration, you can do it both at Hawaiian or Ferguson, just Ferguson, or just FEDI.
Oh, so this is... Is... Let me see if I can understand this, if you don't mind me asking. So is this saying that you could do K8 at Hawaiian, K8 at Ferguson, K8 at FEDI, all of those schools can do K8?
Just those two. The first two column is, yes, the board hypothetically said Ferguson will close FEDI and will convert Ferguson and Hawaiian to K8.
Okay, so this says close FEDI and convert Ferguson and Hawaiian.
And Hawaiian, yes, that's the first two columns.
Nice.
That makes sense. So you divide the 150 students at FEDI, 75 each, to Hawaiian and Ferguson.
But you still only have 36 kids at TK.
Right, yeah, this doesn't change, the TK projection doesn't change, the K to six, TK to six projection doesn't change. It's just that you would put the middle school, the seventh graders here at these two schools instead of FEDI, and eighth grader at these two schools instead of FEDI. Right, this is if you were to put the seven and eight graders just at Ferguson, right? This is the opposite. You were to close down Ferguson and put them all at FEDI. The enrollment doesn't change, right? It just... Where where do you decide to put the student? Mr. President, did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So the Vice President walked in just in time for this. This is his question. He asked that what is the ideal size for a K6 school, or TK to six, rather, I apologize? This is if we have, you know, a magic wand, we would like to see our schools look this way, right? Two classes in TK, three in K, and three in every other grade level, right? So this is a maximum efficiencies, teacher collaborations, administrative staffing, support for the schools, right? But this is just ideal. This is theoretical. It it, you know, in the real world, students don't come in in this perfect package of 600 students or about 598. So and the class size is very manageable, right? 20 at TK to one, 20 to one at TK, 24, 25 at K to third, and 29 at four to six. So that was the question was if what is the ideal or optimal class size at?
School size.
School size, I'm sorry, school size and class size, both. This would be it, right? So if you have about, if you look at our TK to six enrollment is 8801, you take that, you divide it by the ideal number of of students per school, then you know that you need about 13 schools or so, 13 or 14 schools. So that's another way of looking at different things. But like I said, this is just theoretical and ideal. It students do not come in this perfect package in term of enrollment. Another question was asked is what is the current staffing at each school by the district and by the site? And 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 their total number of teachers, and how many combo classes are there at each school? And this report will give you that. Again, Aloha at 262, based on the contract formula, the district provide 12 teachers. This is just regular education, not special ed. Special ed is outside of this calculation. The side decide to use their money to 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 fund or pay for one full-time teacher. So they have 13 teachers there. Even with that, there's two combination classes at that school. So this provide the listing. The school with the dual immersion program like Nemus, because it's almost like two school within one, so you have more combo cla- combination classes. But this is every school, every elementary school and the number of combination classes. Again, this is as of 828. We do have about four weeks to balance. That was the question from the last meeting. What was that term balancing the class? So, uh, to meet contract obligation. Uh, so we're still working on this, but this is again S F August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. So a question was asked by what is by-site funding? This is site-based funding. This is money given directly to the site. And the principals, along with the site council and the leadership team, decide on how to spend the money. So this is pre-COVID. I was asked, I want, you know, board member want to see a pre-COVID data versus post-COVID. So again, Aloha in twenty-eight, twenty-nineteen, their u- unduplicated pupil percentage is eighty-six point eight. Their P two ADA at that, for that year was three hundred and thirty-six. And that school allocation was two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three ninety-one. They had Title One funding, Title One parent involvement, LCAP funding, VAPA funding, and LCFF funding, which is the base funding for that school. So you can read across and the total. So the district provided in twenty eighteen nineteen about eight point nine million dollars directly to the schools. And the schools has one hundred percent discretion on how to spend this money. They have to be in compliance with federal, state, and district law, rules and programs and policy. But for example, Title One, they're very restricted on how you spend that money. LCAP, you know, very restricted on how you spend that money. But it's 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 it's, um, up to the school. So moving forward twenty-five, twenty-six, um, if you notice, UDP changed a little bit by school by school. ADA clearly changed, you know, a lot, uh, and but they have a lot more funding. So if you look at just the total bottom number with about twenty percent less in students, uh, but the district provide about three million more in direct support to school with a total of eleven million dollars. So when you look at Artesia, for example, the money given to Artesia is about one million, one hundred and ninety thousand. This is not for staffing, right? This is just for the site to spend to support the students, right? You happen to be a parent at Artesia, you can go to that school and ask for the detailed report of how they spent that money. And this is not just, I don't want to pick on Artesia, albeit every school, right? So, that's the report. So this is just a two-year comparison and and, uh, year by year and the change. Even, like I said, with the declining in enrollment, uh, we, uh, uh, we provide additional funding to to support the school. And and clearly, right, it followed the students in terms of LCAP, in term of Title One funding. Our larger schools, Lille, uh, four twenty-five, twenty-six, received two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. They are twice, more than twice bigger than Ferguson, but Ferguson at four hundred and twelve, against based on the needs of students.
Can you clarify how we determine which schools get the Title One funding?
Thank you for the question. We don't have to, because the federal government tell us how to do that. So usually, the 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 basic rule is that when you forty percent or more, you qualify, but depends on the district average. We are ap- approaching sixty percent. This is UDP now, not not just low income. But for to qualify for Title One schools, um, it should be about above fifty-one percent, uh, low income and 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 unduplicated pupil percentage. When I say that term, that is the percentage of their students who are low income, English learners, and foster youth, unduplicated. So if you happen to be both, we only count you once, right? You can be English learners and and low income, but we we only count it once. So that percentage, and if you can look at, um, a school with the biggest change in term of their, uh, UDP would be BRAC. If you look at, they are fifty-nine percent now. So they they newly qualify for Title One funding. Versus in eighteen nineteen, they had forty-three percent. So another factor within ABC is that the demographic at every, all schools are changing rapidly. Or are changing, right? So you wouldn't expect BRAC, who was at forty-three percent, now is at fifty-nine percent, for example. Or if you look at Nixon, it was thirty-six percent, now it's fifty-five percent. So, like I said, there's a lot of information in these slides. And I want to thank the board for allowing me to share this. Another question is that how many substitute do we have that is actually having a cla- uh, um, a class roster? We have ten long-term subs, S F eight twenty-eight, seven is in special education, and three is in a dual imm- like, dual immersion program. And Dr. Fraser is in the process of returning higher permanent credential teachers, um, for these classes. Question was asked is about Tracy enrollment and staffing. Uh, we have seventy students enrolled as of August twenty-eight. About fifty-six attends daily, and this is the staffing. We have a principal, an AP, a mental health professional, a counselor, is paid for by a special fund equity multiplier. And we have nine teachers at that school. Seven is paying for by the district and two is paying for by equity multiplier. By law, we have to have a continuation school, regardless of how small it is. It just, you know, however we choose to run that program. And what is equity multiplier fund? It's a special grant. And Tracy is the only school in the district that qualify for that grant. And this year, uh, we are expected to receive about four hundred and seventy-six thousand students. Again, this funding is based on last year ADA. This, next year, now since the enrollment here drops so much, it will change drastically. So if you look at the data before, right, Tracy is a school with the largest drop in term of percentage, right? It was about one hundred and twenty student last year, and now seventy student. Sorry, one sixty-four versus seventy. It was dropped by ninety-four student, so, right? So there was a question was asked that how many students at our comprehensive high school right now that potentially could attend Tracy due to credit deficiency, right? We ran a report, and I want to say about hundred and thirty, hundred and fifteen students that potentially, uh, if they choose to, they can attend Tracy to make up, uh, for their credits. Now, uh, we will work with the families, uh, but it's parents' choice, right? It's, the parents have the right to keep their students at the comprehensive high school or attend Tracy. We will work with the different families or different options, um, um, at at some time. If there's, um, cases that may require some invol- involuntary transfer to Tracy, we will do that. But for the most part, it's voluntary program. So hundred and fifteen students, uh, potentially on the list that eligible to attend Tracy due to credit deficiency.
Doctor, you have some question?
Mi- microphone, nobody can hear you.
Um, so with this specific item, could the students stay at the comprehensive high school? And we tasked the site principals to come up with a way to allow them to do the credit recovery that they need?
Dr. Castro asked for that.
Thank you for the question. Uh, certainly, we do have, I'll speak to, like, Artesia High School as an opportunity program, very limited in scope. Uh, students at a comprehensive high school are held to the standards of a comprehensive high school per ed code. And so therefore, they must meet the state requirements for graduation, and they must complete, uh, the entire program of what's required. For some students, it's a struggle to meet that two hundred and thirty. And so at Tracy High School, our graduation requirement is at one ninety. They also have an accelerated pace, which is not allowed at the comprehensive schools. They're at a quarter system at Tracy High School, and so they can achieve more credits within that quarter system. So typically, uh, what we've done with Tracy High School is we encourage schools to use Tracy High School as early as possible so that students can go recover their credits and then go back to their comprehensive high schools. We're not saying Tracy is a permanent solution for students, but it's an option for them to be able to recover those credits at an accelerated pace, especially when students find themselves very deeply in the hole.
You have another question?
No, just a comment. I mean, uh, we are considering options, and, uh, we always have students from Tracy come to us and tell us about their amazing turnaround story. And so I know that having an alternative program for students is exactly what they need. At the same time, I think it's, you know, given the circumstances, if it's not mandated that we have an alternative school in of our schools.
It's, it is mandated. He just said it's mandated.
And what ed code? I I looked it up.
Four eight four three zero, four eight four three seven. Um, it doesn't have to be, you know, in term of configuration, does it have to be at the current pro, you know, location? Uh, uh, you know, district is unique in term of demographic and and there's certain, um, issues within the district uh, in terms of the ideal location for for the school. So, uh, but, uh, we are required to have a continuation education program, right? For for students to make up their credit.
Thank you.
Uh, one of the question again was asked by the board is, um, what about, what about, what about those grants that was brought up at Ferguson? So, we we have a potential, and I want to say potential, because we are still at very early discussion stage with the city about, uh, a possible renovations of the field at Ferguson, similar to to our joint use agreement with the City of Hawaiian Gardens at FEDI. Um, you know, project total is about three point four million, and this is the funding, uh, the different funding. Nothing, um, there's nothing to report to the board, because like I said, still a very preliminary exploring stage. Um, there has been meetings, um, between district staff and city staff. Uh, there there's potential use of, we were talking about, um, artificial turf versus, uh, natural grass. We're talking about you have to move the solar panels that would just install there, uh, toward the parking a little bit to create space. So there's a lot of logistic, um, you know, um, things that we're still looking at, uh, in term of this joint use agreement. Like I said, potential joint use agreement with the city. There was a grant that, uh, FEDI, I'm sorry, Ferguson also received. Um, it's called the literacy coaches and reading specialist grant for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we receive in twenty-three, twenty-four. They have until twenty-seven, twenty-eight to spend it. Spent about a hundred and seventy thousand to date and, um, to, we, Fer- Ferguson was the only school um, qualify or and receive this grant because of their UDP s- uh, student. Their percentage of unduplicated pupil percentage is higher than ninety-five percent, ninety-five percent or higher in grade K to third. And this is again for literacy program at that school. Um, I will turn over to Dr. Castro to share with the board about from an academic perspective of the different, uh, options that the board is considering.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Um, so I've been asked to present some information on the academic program challenges in small schools due to declining enrollment. And so the first one that is often discussed is these mixed grade level classes, also known as combos. So I did list for you some pros and cons that I found in the research. But the pros, it does allow for student independence and self-based instruction and promotes peer-to-peer learning. This is typically seen, though, in upper grade levels, pretty co- common for higher accelerated classes. Like in high school, you have accelerated math courses and there are mixed grade levels in that. The con, though, the research shows, there is some evidence of negative impacts on test scores, particularly for math. Now, of course, research is not always complete. This was from a specific study conducted by the University of Milan, but it was supported by a separate study from the California Class Size Reduction Program, and the effects were mostly seen for students in grades two and three. Um, another con would be the increase of the need for specific differentiated supports, especially for students who cannot learn independently. Obviously, teaching two different grade levels, different curriculum, causes additional workload for teachers. And also trying to manage different student learning levels in those different grade levels would also require some adjustment and would require a lot of professional learning and some more flexible models in the classroom setup. Another challenge that we've seen, um, for declining enrollment in our smaller schools is sharing of elective programs such as band, arts, or other additional enrichment offerings. So it typically typically happens, especially what we've seen with some of our programs, is a school, because it, uh, cannot, uh, does not have full funding to support one full program. So for Prop twenty-eight funds, it's based on not only the percentage of UDP, but on your enrollment as well. And so typical Prop twenty-eight funds sometimes do not, are not able to fund one entire teacher. And often we see that schools would have to share a teacher with another school site or two other school sites. That means that, uh, students experiencing programs such as the arts would have to be done in rotations. And the scheduling is often happening dependent on when the teacher is available to travel. So ideally, preferably, our program should occur in the afternoon. But because we're trying to split the teacher with three different schools, sometimes it can't always happen in the afternoon, and it happens in the morning, just depending on the situation. In addition to that, it is difficult sometimes in attracting and retaining personnel. Um, we've had a recent situation where we had, uh, hired, uh, a staff member to work at one of our school sites, but it would have to be a split situation. And they decided to accept a job offer at another school district that had a full-time at one particular school site. So having to, it's not ideal for when we're trying to recruit staff for positions, that they would prefer to have one singular school site. There's also limited offerings and specialized programs. So this is just beyond the arts and bands and enrichment. So this includes, uh, special education, counseling, or various therapies. Typically, we've also had to split special education teachers who work at two smaller school sites because of the different caseloads. Currently, we have seven split assignments for our special education teachers due to class sizes or case sizes. We also have limited counseling or specialized staff, and we also have to spit, split those up among school sites. And we also have limited staff to offer and support extracurricular activities such as elementary track, STEM Olympics, spelling bee. Some of our school sta- sites have staff as low as thirteen, fourteen teachers, as you saw in the previous chart. And so when you have a limited number of staff, it typically becomes that everybody is doing everything. And it's, uh, not easy to then ask staff members to stay additional time after school, come on Saturdays. In the past, even for our STEM Olympics, although this last year, I'm happy to say that every school was represented. We have had difficulties having a team at every single school site because of, um, the strain on staff on having to take on additional duties. These next set of slides is more about, um, there was, I was asked to show, what does the research show about K eight schools and six, seven, eight schools? So you can see here that, first thing that I noticed, there was a one main research that was cited repeatedly, which was Rockoff and Lockwood from two thousand and ten, and it shows that context matters, first of all. So the transition supports, the school side, the community engagement impacts the success of either model. So whether K eight is successful or whether a six, seven, eight is successful really depends on our intentionality and the programs we design to support students in those transitions. The next thing is that some studies did show that there was a modest academic achievement and fewer suspensions in K eight models due to fewer class transitions for students. So technically, these were very urban school districts that were studied, Philadelphia and New York. But the fewer transitions that there were for students, meaning whether it be the transition happening from eight to nine or from five to six, the the more that we reduce or or increase the support during those transitions, the more successful students were. So again, the intentionality and the context behind it. In California, though, context does matter, because we look at how our frameworks are designed. And in California, it does, the six, seven, eight model does align with the current California standards for science and math. Those frameworks are written for those specific grade levels in that way. We also have staff with content area expertise, and that allows for more collaboration. Our seventh and eighth grade, uh, our current middle schools have teachers who are content credentials. And so therefore, they can provide specific expertise on some of those areas. Although a sixth grade teachers would travel to the middle schools or be part of that middle school, and they are multiple subject, certainly exposure to content experts, having them be at the table to help them plan for math, science, English, and history activities would contribute to their own experiences and enriching the curriculum for students. We could also look at broader program offerings for electives, extracurricular activities, world languages, and CTE introductory offerings. At the, uh, middle schools, we have more, and you'll see that in a further slide. We have the opportunity for them to take world languages for high school credit. We have the opportunities to take some, um, college and career courses, and I'll give you some more details in the next slide. And there's an array of labs and facilities specific to the needs of specialized courses for college and career readiness. Again, as I spoke about before, for CTE and dual enrollment, that currently exists at our seven, eight schools. So here is one of the pros for a six, seven, eight. You can see the specialized lab. You can see the specialized labs, facilities, and extracurricular programming in middle schools. When I speak about labs, these are actual infrastructure, so these are, uh, it's not just equipment, it's actually how they were designed. So in our middle schools, they were designed to offer science labs. And so you can kind of see on the bottom picture there, the robotics, but you can see behind it that, uh, that's at FEDI Middle School, it was designed to be lab stations, which are important because they have special equipment, faucets and such that are necessary for both physical and chemical labs. You can see at the top there for CTE digital media and film video production, we have sets that are designed at the middle school. Again, this is an infrastructure, um, the one above is from Teslov Middle School. And then we've recently started to design some of our CTE video game, um, programs. And that you can see at FEDI, they have their new vid, um, uh, CTE game video design lab that was just installed this last year. And there, you can see the listing of various offerings that are, uh, currently at our middle schools that sixth grade students could be exposed to, either on an elective wheel rotation or if they were in an accelerated pathway, they could possibly also take. And one last note about our middle schools is that we offer intramural sports and a wide variety. You can see there, we offer volleyball, soccer, basketball, and track for both boys and girls. And they play that intramural and they compete with other middle schools across the district. So if sixth graders were included in that, they could also participate in those intramural activities. Um, I had spoken about this a little bit already, but, um, another pro would be maximizing our next generation science standards-ready labs, which every middle school has science labs that are designed specifically for science experiments and math pathway options. So since I already talked about the labs, I'm going to spend a little bit more time on the math pathways because I do get this question quite often about the accelerated math pathways. If our sixth graders are able to be at the middle school, it does allow for the sixth grade students to now have access to content teachers. And we could offer, we could look and explore the possibility of, um, promoting a new accelerated math pathway where there could be a sixth grade accelerated math class, leading to a seventh grade accelerated math class. And then, um, by eighth grade, they would take, be taking Integrated Math One, which is typically the first year of high school, so that we can do in advance. So why can't we do that now? Because the accelerated math six content would require a credential teacher, to be a math credential teacher, to be teaching that course. So that is why we don't currently have that. Could we have that if they join the sixth grade? There could certainly be a way that we could do that for sixth grade students to join in that pathway. And then you could see how that pathway would allow for continuous work in high school to reach AP Calculus and the possibility of going AP Calculus, BC, or Statistics. Another pro due to some grants that we've been able to receive. We've received the Golden State Pathways Program Grant, which is about four million dollars, which supports CTE school counselors at middle schools for at least the next three years. So for sixth grade students, that means they would have access to school counselors that would support them academically as well as socially, emotionally, because I know somebody asked about social emotional supports in addition to the MHP. Uh, these grant funds do restrict that these CTE counselors live at the middle school grade levels. And it does ensure that we look at academic review, so we could look at a six-year plan for students. By the time they're in sixth grade, start developing that, looking at college readiness, and as I mentioned before, social emotional development. Currently, there are only three counselors at the middle school, but we're planning to expand. And as I spoke about earlier, the research study that talked about, um, the possible negative effects, and one way to counter that was to be very intentional with the supports that are provided to students who are transitioning. So what I'm showing you here is what the research has cited and as well as in combination with things we currently already have to help support students with the transition. So research has noted that a sixth grade academy model is the best model. So in other words, rather than taking sixth graders, putting them out of middle school and forcing them to take six different classes like we do our middle school students and constantly moving from class to class, it's best to keep them with their teachers as they currently have now in the blocks of time. So they would have an English and history block with their teacher, a math and science block. Elective and academic interventions, that could be a wheel, like I mentioned before, where the CTE and other types of courses are pushed in for the sixth graders, and then they would be able to have PE. In that math and science block, for those students that are accelerated, those could be, uh, those students could then attend a separate class for their accelerated sixth grade. So that's how they would be able to access those content teachers. In addition, we currently have programs to help support that transition that we can expand to serve our sixth grade students going into middle school. We have a program in summer school called the Middle School Prep Program. That's help, that's, uh, open to all students. We, right now, we particularly support students who are foster homeless youth, EL and low income, but also looking at students who have been struggling academically, but certainly that's something that can be expanded. And that, uh, class is meant to prepare students for the rigor of writing and math in middle school. Uh, we also have an early start day. Every single one of our middle schools have an early start day, and that early start day is only for seventh graders, but we could certainly look at the possibility of including our sixth graders in that. And that is in order to help the students just become comfortable with the campus. So they get a full day, and I went myself this year, I was able to visit Halskull Middle School. They had a great, uh, they call it Welcome Everybody Day. It's led by eighth graders along with the teachers of the seventh grade students. They had a morning rally, they got to break up into small groups, play some games, and then they got to learn about the school rules. They talked about the dangers of social media and the appropriate use of cell phones and not to use it at school. And then they also showed them their lockers, PE rotations, uh, where all the classroom buildings were, helped them with their book checkout. So that way, the first day of school for middle school students is not as scary as it could be as we're providing them some, uh, a softer landing with this early start day. And I'll hand it back to Mr. Nguyen for the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Castro. So, um, the information here, uh, for the most part, was presented at the last board meeting already, so I will not repeat myself. Uh, this is the state budget recap for this year. This is our COLA and the different programs the state is supporting, including with the one-time block grant, uh, for the district. And this is on the, the other side of the ledger, the expenditure side. The ADA funded was reduced by five hundred and twelve students. Healthcare costs went up by three point three million. We have an increase in general liability, uh, insurance, uh, cost. This is just the increase in the premium alone for this year. But we still have a structural deficit that the county asks us to address, uh, going forward. I added this slide, you didn't see this at the last meeting. Uh, this is our special education, although our total enrollment has declined in the last five years. Special, special education, um, students, um, showing a different, uh, trend and pattern. And and the cost associated with with special education also has increased. I want to point out that in the twenty twenty-one, uh, school year, uh, that was, um, be due to COVID, the expenditure there is, 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 um, is lower than than normally. It normally, we would spend about forty-three million, uh, pre-COVID. So, so you want to look at the trend, you start in twenty-one, twenty-two. So you see that big jump is because of COVID. In that year, we were not able to to provide the support, uh, due to COVID, obviously. But, um, regardless, since twenty-one, twenty-two, special education expenditure has increased by about twelve million dollars. And if you look at our total budget, it's about three hundred and twenty million, uh, fifty-seven million is special education. So this is the federal, these are the federal programs, and this is what we received last year. And as I shared the last meeting, these programs are most likely not to continue, meaning that we will lose this funding from the federal government, including Program for Migrant Education, uh, Title Two, which is, um, teacher training. Title Three, there's English learners, there's Title Three for immigrants. And Title Four for student support, about two point eight million dollars in general fund and about three hundred and fifty-two thousand from the adult school. About three point two million total in federal funding that, um, we were informed that most likely will not be available or exist in twenty-six, twenty-seven. These are the other federal programs that will continue beyond twenty-five, twenty-six. Title One Funding for Low-Income Students, uh, Special Education Funding Head Start Programs, and the National School Lunch Program, about eighteen point two million dollars that the district received. These programs will continue beyond twenty-five, twenty-six. That has concluded our presentation, and I will turn it back to the board president.
Thank you. I think the next section is, um, public comments.
Persons wishing to address the board should fill out a card located on the table by the door and submit the completed card to the secretary. Speakers will be called in sequence during the public comment section or prior to board discussion on an agendized item. Persons wishing to address the board on a specific agenda item at the time the item is under discussion are limited to five minutes each and will be called to speak following the staff comments and prior to the board's discussion in taking action. The board shall provide thirty minutes for speakers to address agendized items. Should there be six to ten speakers for agendized items, individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board on the item. In order to ensure that non-English speakers receive the same opportunity to directly address the board, any member of the public who utilizes a translator shall be provided at least twice the allotted time to address the board. Please remember that the board is unable to directly respond to comments made during the public comment section. In addition, neither the board nor district staff verify the accuracy of the statements made during public comments. Adverse remarks about a person's race, ancestry, ethnic group identification, religion, color, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender, mental or physical disability, or age may not be made. Please avoid remarks or charges which reflect upon the character, motives, qualifications, or ability of any school district employee, regardless if the identification is by name, position, or other reference. Such comments may be presented through the proper administrative channels set forth in Bylaw nine-three-two-three. So the first public comment.
How many public comments do we have?
Currently, I have three on my table. Currently, we have seven.
Okay, so that means three minutes per speaker?
Okay, so, um, first we will have, uh, Sandy Mercado Navarez, next Celia Spitzer, and Carla B. Santa Cruz. So if you could please, um, prepare, first we'll have Sandy Mercado Navarez, thank you. Three minutes.
What time you start, seven-thirty?
Thank you, I'm glad that I came, I've got up first. Good evening, Superintendent Sitlo, President Nichi, uh, the School Board and the Executive Board members. I speak before you as a former Ferguson teacher who has lived shared experiences with Ferguson families ever since teaching kindergarten and following my students into adulthood. I I've attended many celebrations, graduations, quinceañeras, you name it. It's been, uh, just, uh, a wonderful personal family experience, uh, for me. Ferguson has a real sense of community. Although this evening's topic of pending school consolidations and closures merits more time than allotted. It is my hope the school board will consider all proposals before arriving at a final conclusion. I propose Ferguson transition into a community school. I believe a community school can maintain and support both Ferguson's dual-language immersion program and its newly adopted literacy program while creating a dynamic community hub that will support both the school and the community. I'd like to share a brief context before describing what the community school model really is. ABC Unified School District recently, your recent analysis of potential school closures was conducted by a third-party consulting group, Schoolworks, Inc. While such reports are a common baseline, they are tools for school districts. Schoolworks, Inc., the report represents only the start or the starting point of much, of a much larger, more thoughtful process. Across the state, best practice requires community input sessions such as this one, and I thank you for offering this session. We trust the district's intent is to understand the human and educational impacts that cannot be captured in data alone. Third-party analysis focuses primarily on numerical configurations and efficiencies, but often underestimate the lived and shared experiences of students, families, and staff. We understand school closures carry profound and lasting effects on children's sense of stability, belonging, and opportunity. For this reason, I urge the district to conduct its due diligence based on prior, input, and especially today's input, by engaging directly with its affected communities, exploring creative alternatives, and ensuring that all voices are meaningfully included. Decisions of this magnitude must be grounded not only in spreadsheets but in a holistic understanding of what is best for students' lives and futures. With this being said.
Thank you.
I do apologize for the timer, when I, thank you.
Okay.
We do have the paper.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have Celia Spitzer, followed by Carla B. Santa Cruz and, uh, Kerit Chauhan.
A copy of my remarks are being passed out, so I'm going to talk really fast. I do want to mention that, um, I went to K-eight school in Chicago a gazillion years ago. I was there until when my parents moved to Arizona when I was in the middle of seventh grade. My daughter went to Teslov when it still had a sixth, had a sixth grade in nineteen seventy-nine, eighty. Most people don't know about that. Both my granddaughters in San Diego went to six-eight middle school. In early twenty-twenty-two, our school board saw the proverbial writing on the wall showing that due to ongoing declining enrollment, some number of elementary schools needed to be closed and their students consolidated with other schools. The board formed an ad hoc committee to, quote, "review and prioritize issues of declining enrollment and efficient use of facilities." The committee's first meeting was in May twenty-twenty-three, and it was to make its recommendation by May twenty-twenty-four. Unfortunately, due to a number of events, the committee did not have the opportunity to complete the task. In June of this year, after analysis by a consultant, a great deal of input from the ABC community, discussion by the board in continuing declining enrollment, the board on a four-three vote chose not to close any elementary schools nor to reconfigure middle schools to include grades six through eight. Here we are in September and faced with the same problem. Declining enrollment continues and a growing number of elementary schools have enrollment so low that their facilities cannot be used efficiently, resulting in mixed-grade-level combo classes, which can negatively impact student learning and limited offerings in special programs. The report presented tonight is very comprehensive and has far more salient data than that which was presented by the consultant in May. A big hats off to our staff. The report also presents the many benefits of including grade six in our middle schools. While closing schools is a difficult decision to make, school districts throughout California are doing so. The decline in enrollment continues, and, that's fine, thank you, um, continues, and there is nothing to suggest that it will reverse. In addition, some sources of revenue that we have had will decrease and others will no longer exist, some even as soon as the next school year. I strongly encourage the board to place an information item on the agenda for its next or immediately following meeting, similar to information item one point two dash I of the June third meeting, which said public hearing for school consolidation and reconfiguration. Based on the most recent data and analysis in tonight's report, if this is done, I hope the following meeting would have an action item similar to the one in June seventeenth, and at that time, the board would vote to move ahead with this much-needed action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carla B. Santa Cruz, followed by Kerit Chauhan and Tammy Cabrera.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carla Santa Cruz, as you know, an Area Two constituent with over fifty years of expertise and experience as an ABC bilingual educator, and you've heard multiple pleas on why Ferguson is so important by Ferguson. Gardens, Wine Gardens former community. Hawaiian Gardens' former community employees and alumni. This is not nostalgia to open buildings, but rather the heart and lifetime, lifeline of a walking community. Like Sandy, I share history and connection with Hawaiian Gardens' community for over fifty years. I have some additional thoughts because I would like to highlight Ferguson's strengths to the community to increase interest in participation and enrollment. I would like to see efforts to increase the Ferguson Elementary Dual Immersion Programs, which can be supported with increased visibility across the district, perhaps even on the nearby illuminated freeway signs. I noticed a new sign publicizing the Mandarin Dual Immersion Program posted at the corner entrance of Stowers Elementary School on Carmanita. I see possibilities in more networking and cross-program alliance across the three dual-immersion schools in three distinct geographical areas. Ferguson, Nemus, Stowers already occurring through sealed professional development. There could be additional support for the district dual-immersion programs through shared advertising and more communication on the district website, family involvement, and more. The IB program as one possible option to consider towards building attendance in the future. I realize there are many steps along the way, but first, finding interest is a new option. I'm very aware that Ferguson is already overloaded with their literacy grant, but I just would love to explore more possibilities because there are very few dual-immersion IB combinations in California and fewer in Southern California. So Ferguson would stand out and could partner with Stowers Elementary IB Mandarin Dual Immersion to both be publicized as ABC unique stellar programs. Stowers already has an IB primary program, and I did, um, propose consideration of a TK eight configuration for Stowers in June as well. Ferguson already has a full TK six Spanish Dual Immersion Program, but could potentially become an IB Spanish Dual Immersion with staff, district, and community dedication. Also, looking at the TK options and our data from this year, parents had an option to have no TK or continue in preschool. So perhaps if we look at our preschool Head Start data, we might see a more, a larger cohort. The reason I propose to explore the concept of the combined program as well as encourage advertisement for the district dual-immersion programs is to highlight school-of-choice programs in three distinct geographical areas to the district. Thank you for consideration. Last call. The district supporting surrounding districts would not be competition because they're full. I checked, indeed, people from Patrick Henry area in Long Beach wanted to go to Carpenter in Downey because they were full. Carpenter's now full, and so we could be unique. Let's highlight our schools. Thank you.
Next, we have Kerit Chauhan, Tammy Cabrera, following, and Patrick Gordon.
Good evening, Board members and staff. It is no doubt, I will, I agree with what Celia had to say wholeheartedly. We are here because there's no denying. The data that we have does not lie. How we interpret the data is subjective, though. In preparing for school closure, here's a good Duncan experiment that I'd like you to consider. Have each principal create a plan. If a catastrophe happened tomorrow and they had to close a school, how would you do it? Where would you put your students? Where would the programs go? And that should be done for every single school. It should be part of a disaster plan. If you had such data, you might be able to say, you know, this is a good option. When we were on the committee, we were several data elements that we considered and decided to leave out. But that's neither here nor there. It is about time that the Board comes to a decision to realistically close some campuses. You cannot get your way out of this. Denying this is denying the future students the right that they deserve. You can cry all you want about students and how they'll feel. Tell me what you're going to tell a student when they graduate from here and they can't get a job. Try listening to the students who graduated from this very district, who are underemployed. Yes, you think you have a good graduation report. Look at the underneath data. College and career readiness. It is not even. What matters to me is not what you close, it's how you reinvent your schools and bring about a future that the parents and students can tie into. As a district, you had an opportunity to lead, but you have deferred. Cell phone policy is something you should have done a long time ago. Instead, you waited for the state to act. And still not universally there. So why don't you take the lead? I need civics back in our schools so students can be engaged. We need to have a consumer economic class for all of the students at ninth-grade level. It is pointless talking about economics at twelfth grade. They don't understand money, and they don't know how it works. CTE pathway should be an option for all the students. Thank you.
Next, we have Tammy Cabrera, followed by Patrick Gordon, Ben Robin Rico.
Good evening, President Nishid, Dr. Zitlow, esteemed members of the Board and district staff. Uh, as you can see, I'm on a ticking time bomb over here, but there's something I really want to say because my history with the district's gone back about three decades. It started when I was at Stowers, and then at Carmanita, and at Cerritos. At Cerritos, there was a wonderful teacher named Richard Neville, who said something that I'll never forget, and there's context that extends to this day, to the conversation we're talking regarding stylers and where we go from here. What he said was, at an upcoming conference, he said, um, he said to our class, he said, "You can't stand a chance against those East Coasters. You can't." And he was trying to be lovingly honest, but the fact of the matter was, he protected the future for us because he knew that the future is a dim one unless we can look at it with sterner lenses. And so I come to you, I'm so sorry, I come to you, although I know my Stowers fellow parents have rallied so hard, and I'm so proud of them for doing what they did, but I do have to tell you that I myself don't think that Ramella, this is Ramella, I don't think she can be at Stowers because number one, their PBIS system is nearly nonexistent. Number two, and I'm sorry, PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, evidence by bullying, evidence by lack of communication between adult staff on campus regarding safety, basic safety measures, um, that keep playground itself is safe in one recess period. Also, I don't think Ramella can go there, and I think I would ask that Ramella be able to go to another campus because writing now in the early elementary grades is really, really scant. And, and I know this because I'm a teacher myself. In fact, I teach sixth through eighth grade math. I'm on the west side. I should be at home preparing for that today. But I need to talk to you about this because this is very relevant. So thank you. Ramella is very upset. And, and I hope my message is conveyed that, you know, things just have to happen. I agree. Because in the end, children grow up. Those treasured homes and properties that we esteem because of that neighboring school, that will become irrelevant when your children are old enough to compete in the world market. And so what will matter is what kind of education they receive today. Thank you.
You don't need a timer on this.
Next, we have Patrick Gordon, followed by Robin Rico and Michael Ku.
Should have brought a baby. All right, so, uh, my name is Patrick Gordon. I'm a teacher at Gar High School. I've been teaching at Gar for thirty years now. You might ask yourself why I would care because I'm probably a few years from retirement, but, um, because of all the time that I've invested into Gar High School, I, I just kind of wanted to share my perspective. Uh, I do understand that this is a very emotional, um, process, and I do know that there are a lot of people very concerned about the memories um, and the commitment that people have made to their students and that the teachers that have made to their schools. But I also feel that the discussions about buildings not teaching students, but teachers teaching students, and that you can build community. I, I really feel the district can't make a decision on this sort of stuff with regards to people's memories because even if you close schools, those memories won't be gone. Those experiences won't be gone. The time that teachers put in will not be gone. I get the sixth, seventh, and eighth. I get the transition. My daughter went to schools that had sixth, seventh, and eighth. She managed to barely survive, but she survived. And I think what Dr. Castro said about having money and having resources to provide transitional support would be very important and could be immediately a part of, of what the district prioritizes. I think some of the novel ideas that people are speaking to are things that can happen, but those things need to happen on top of probably these schools' closures because of the dramatic economic effect they can have. Yes, the consultancy made decisions without the emotions, without being connected to these schools, without being connected to these teachers, without being connected to these students. I teach AP Economics. I'm the only AP Economics teacher in this district. It's a matter of economics. This is a problem. You know, the money that might be offered to teachers for early retirement, not for some windfall, but to take those salaries away and provide lower salaries with newer teachers to come in to reinvigorate this district. ABC cannot be complacent. They cannot be. They're, in the past, they have been. The failed bond measure, I walked around. I knocked on doors, carrying a, carrying an overhead projector. You can't be complacent, especially if we're talking about the trend being to fourteen thousand students eventually. Declining enrollment is masking the crisis of ABC not being competitive. I have colleagues that work in different school districts making five, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars more than I currently make. And I can tell you, I had a chance to leave ABC years ago. It makes me sad to say this. I should have left. And you think, oh, the students that I would have missed, the students that I built these relationships with, the students that had success in my classes, I could have had that success someplace else. Well, maybe you wouldn't be happy. You know, for twenty thousand dollars a year for the last five years of my career, for another ten thousand, the five years before that, man, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. I know how many people are applying for jobs. I'm a, I'm a department chair. I know how many people are applying for jobs in this district for positions. I know how many people are applying for jobs in other districts. If you don't do anything and you delay, you are rearranging the chairs on the Titanic. And you will not survive because of how this is perceived in the community around you and the communities around you. I know there's a lot of debate. Was there room, I mentioned the Titanic, was there room on that, that door for Jack? If you don't make this decision now, there's no door. There's no door. There's nothing to hang on to, and you will lose teachers.
Next, we have Robin Rico, followed by Michael Ku.
So I have a few questions and a few comments to add. So one was, why do so many of our parents choose to send their kids to other schools? And can we do a survey of that so that we get better data as to what is causing them to move? And one of the things with math, when I was talking to Mr. Niola, was that Cerritos College is saying that our, well, not specifically our students, but the Cerritos College students aren't able to get their associate's degree because they can't complete college math. So there might be a piece missing there, and it could be worthwhile to connect with those people to get that information. And we also talked about consolidating Whitney High School or Whitney Middle School to FEDI. That would bring a really cool cultural mixture and just an inclusiveness of one side of the community coming to the other side. I know they were in Hawaiian Gardens for summer school, and it seemed like everything went great. And it also allows Hawaiian Gardens to offer its best. The Latino community is so rich and welcoming and loving once you get past the quietness. Like, our parents are very quiet. They're very respectful, and they appreciate teachers. They're not boisterous, so sometimes that comes across as not being welcoming. But once you get past that, you see that love and embrace. And, um, I love that these ladies brought up the cultural magnet. They called it something else, DL or something like, or DI. But I think that would be super cool if our music program could be mariachi-based, or our arts program could be all the, the Latin American arts. Cal State Long Beach has programs that could support this, so we could work together with them. And, duh-duh-duh, it could also help with a better marketing strategy because we definitely need to bring more awareness of our programs. And like these ladies were saying, we have, um, Patrick Henry and Helen Keller in Long Beach, and they're packed. There's no place for the middle school dual-immersion kids to go to. We have FEDI less than a mile away from them, so why don't we welcome those kids into our loving arms? And, um, I would also ask that you please talk to the district staff about what's going on because it keeps coming back to us that our kid, or we have parents who are calling the district office to get kids into Ferguson, and they're being told, "Oh, let's go to Hawaiian because Ferguson is closing." Somebody else today mentioned, "Oh, Stowers can't have whatever." You know, so I think there might be, and I've heard from ABC's teacher staff that, "Oh, well, it's already decided this." So, you know, maybe you guys could talk to your staff about nipping that in, but thank you.
Michael Ku.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, administrators. Thank you for, um, hearing me today. Uh, my name is Michael Ku. Again, I'm a parent of a, a kindergartner at Stowers Elementary. Uh, my middle student, my middle, uh, daughter will be entering school next year, and then a, a third one will be following soon after. Uh, I'm here to say I, I love my community. I, I came to early, um, the ABC Unified Schools because of the great schools. That, that drew me in, and I, I want to see that continue. And I know something has to be done, uh, regarding the budget. Otherwise, uh, the dominoes will fall, and eventually it will not be as strong a school system as it was that drew me in. So part of that is, is I agree. Difficult decisions have to be made. I'm glad you have this hearing. I'm glad you have the community input. Uh, I'd love to be part of that moving forward as well. Appreciate that as well. I do want to speak on behalf of Stowers Elementary. I think we have such a great, strong program. The proof you can see is, as Mr. Nguyen showed us. The, the program is only, it's in third year, and it's just growing. The Kinder numbers are a hundred-ten, stronger than any other school that you see on there, and that those grades will just matriculate, a hundred-ten all across. So even though it says eighty-two percent capacity, in just a couple of years, that will be fully filled because all those students will grow a year, and then another hundred-ten will come in after it. So I encourage you, um, to, to take Stowers out of your, your consideration for either closure or for middle school expansion uh, because we, we are a very strong, passionate community. We love, uh, the parents love the kids. We, we're very proactive. It's, it's definitely a, a great program, and the numbers show it. It, I know, I know a lot of schools have all, a heart and soul, and I, I agree. I love that passion. The numbers are, are there already. There's nothing more that can speak more to the feat that are coming into the classrooms and paying for, you know, the, the, what is it, the daily ADA. So, um, I, I hope that Stowers can be left alone from either combination with, with other schools or just even the expansion to middle schools because, uh, leave us as the program for a model. It is really working well, and I think it should be left alone to its devices. So, thank you so much.
Megan Mitchell.
I need a motion because we're at thirty minutes, just about, uh, to extend for, how many more speakers?
Two more.
Two more, so maybe seven minutes? Can I get a motion for that? Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Great. Stand up for seven minutes. Eight oh-seven.
So I come up here wearing multiple hats. The first hat that I always identify with is as a teacher, because ABC is the district where I teach, and it's the district that I love. Second is as a parent, because both of my children are ABC students. I have one at Cerritos Elementary in first grade, and I have a, can't even say it, a senior at Cerritos High School. That's a whole nother story. But the one that I'm going to wear today is that of an alumna, because I attended ABC for elementary. I went to Whitman, I'm a proud warrior, prouder tiger, but I'm a proud warrior. And then from seventh to 12th grade, I went to Whitney High School, and I'm a full-time, all six years, Whitney High School alum. One of the topics that is on, or one of the choices that the district was given, was to make Whitney High School a middle school. And I heard from a lot of parents who were concerned about their sixth graders then going to school or being on campus with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. I want to reiterate that Whitney is seventh through 12th grade. So if your sixth grader is not quite ready to be on campus with eighth graders, it's a lot harder to have your 12-year-old seventh grader on campus with 18-year-old students. And you're looking at one who experienced that. As a sixth-grade teacher, I know the developmental appropriate age for students, and having Whitney be separate as a middle school from sixth, seventh, and eighth is much more developmentally appropriate than having Whitney be seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. My seventh-grade year at Whitney, I had an amazing teacher, Mr. Dennis Brent. And having Mr. Brent was fantastic because he whipped us into shape, but I also can tell you that was one of the hardest transitions I've ever made in my life, because Mr. Brent had four periods of juniors, no, I'm sorry, three periods of seniors, one period of juniors, and one period of seventh graders. While Mr. Brent was amazing, his tolerance for 11th and 12th graders was not ready for 12-year-old Megan and my comrades, who just left elementary and playing games. And so I want us to consider that when we're saying we shouldn't move sixth grade to middle school because they're not ready to be in eighth grade, or with eighth graders, that we are then fighting tooth and nail to make sure our seventh graders are on campus with 18-year-olds. That is all I have to say today. I love ABC. I trust that the board will make the right decision. I trust that through our community partnership, that we will do what's best for our district. That is all I got.
Hello again. Good evening, President Nishi, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Zetlow. Again, I'm Jamie Costello Solis. I am a mother with a kindergartner and a fourth grader at Stowers. I know we're here tonight to talk about the district as a whole, and you've heard me many times represent Stowers. Since, you know, we're here, I felt that it would be remiss if I didn't mention the numbers. I think we've all saw it, it's pretty glaring that the Stowers numbers have, are much better than what the School Works showed initially. Stowers, again, has 110 kindergarten students this year. My son is in the non-immersion class, and they are bursting at the seams. I strongly believe there could have been five classes. And, you know, we even added, as, again, the number showed, we added eight students. That may seem small, but compared to many other schools that lost students, it's not an insignificant number. Again, our school shows growth, strength, and the Mandarin immersion program shows momentum. And, you know, this is a material fact that can't be ignored. Stowers has done everything it has been asked to do to increase enrollment, and here we are, showing actual results. If we set a motion aside, as, you know, many have, you know, said here, and just look strictly at facts, because I agree, education is also very important to me. My husband and his family are ABC grad, and my husband went to Nixon, went to Haskell, went to Gar. I, you know, I not go to school here, but I went through the same rigorous academic process. So I value ABC and everything here. So I know you have to make, you know, difficult decisions, but setting, like I said, setting a motion aside and looking strictly at the numbers for Stowers, I mean, they speak for themselves. The Stowers School is not in decline, one of the few that's not in decline. Enrollment is up, parent involvement and student outcomes have, you know, showed a lot of strength. And again, based on the data, it's clear and obvious, we don't believe, I don't believe Stowers should not close. Lastly, I want to point out that the risk of primacy bias here, because Stowers was one of the schools closed, one of the first schools, one of the schools first named in this process, the School Works report. It may unfairly stand out in people's minds as a school that should close, you know, because it's just stuck in people's mind, and sometimes this was just a suggestion. This was not one of, you know, as the School Works representative said, it didn't have to be Stowers, it doesn't have to be Stowers. And again, the number shows that it should not be Stowers. Again, when we strip away any biases, focus on just numbers and facts, the data shows that Stowers is strong, and again, we're growing, we're bursting at the seams. You should see our playground. And that's it. Thank you again. I know you have a very difficult decision, so thank you. Thank you for hearing us out in this study session.
Are there any more public comments?
None.
I'd like to take a short, five-minute break. Five-minute break. All right. I don't think anybody heard me, but that's par for the course. We're back in session. Thank you very much. This is the time for Board to make comments, questions. This is the time for the Board to do the studying. So I don't have a little keyboard here, so you're gonna have to raise your hand. I'm with Board Member McHatten.
Well, I've thought really long and hard about all of this. First of all, aloha and warrez. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you so much to Dr. Castro, Mr. Nguyen, and Dr. Zetlow for all the information that you gathered for us. I appreciate that. Aloha and warrez, continue to lose enrollment. I've thought a lot about the programs, the good programs that are going on at our schools. I think Ferguson's Spanish immersion program can be moved easily to Hawaiian and still be successful. I'm hoping that the reading program that they started working on for two years, even though the teachers will be split into different schools, can still continue with the professional development that went along with that. The funding for a specialist, that will be lost, but I think maybe the district could hopefully do the PD that goes along with that program, so it's not lost. I know Stowers has a great Mandarin immersion program, but I think it can be moved to Gonzales and continue on. I think that enthusiasm will go with the teachers, go with the students, and it will Having Whitney split off into a sixth, seventh, and eighth, and a high school, I think that there could be a lot of coordinated programs. They don't have to be completely separate. They can still be somewhat coordinated and be successful. So I really see some advantages definitely in doing that, being on the Stowers site. I would, I'd like to go back to the original plan. We had a consultant develop it. In the beginning, I really hesitated because I saw the program at Ferguson and I saw the program at Stowers being really successful, but when I look at it and know that they can be moved and that we can move ahead as a district and look at really moving ahead with novel ideas and reinvigorating the programs that we've got, I've got to stick with the original program.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions or? Go ahead. Turn on your mic.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank, first of all, the community for coming out and, you know, bringing some questions to us that we really need to consider, and for the public comments. I was looking at some of the project reports and this, and some of our schools have actually done really well, like, they've improved their enrollment. When I think of Stowers and all of our dual immersion programs, I know most of my colleagues got the CSBA report, I think it was last month that we got it, and one of the articles that I read was that even though we have declining enrollment, sorry, I just had a candy, sour patch, and it's hitting me now. I just, I was reading it, and it was saying, even though we have declining enrollment across the state, there was one program that saw increased enrollment, and that was dual immersion programs. And I think Stowers has proven that? Sorry, it's late. I would actually like to see the district spend money on promoting those programs. I think someone said that they saw a banner for Stowers? All three of them, yeah. Because I, earlier this school year, I asked the superintendent to put the banners out there because I think, okay, I'm just tired, I'm sorry. Whenever public comments said that our other surrounding school districts, they're full. So there's parents who want to send their children to dual immersion programs. I think that we could promote those schools. So I wouldn't want to see Stowers and Ferguson on there. You know my position on Ferguson. You know, I've been very vocal on making sure that that community keeps that school, and I really liked changing Ferguson into community schools. We have that in LAUSD, and it's amazing, it's amazing to have a school that provides not just education, but wraparound services, not just for our students, but for our parents and our community. I think that's an amazing thing that can happen to Ferguson, and I don't want to give up on Ferguson, because I think that, I think if I was told correctly, that grant cannot follow, cannot go to another school, it has to stay at that school. I think that's what I was told. And they're just starting out, and they're doing amazing work over there, and they're using UFLY, which is an amazing program that provides progress for the students, provides literacy foundation for them. So I would be very hesitant to vote on anything that has taken out dual immersion programs from our schools. Yes, it does follow, but it's not going to be the same. And I understand that measures have to be taken. I totally understand that. One thing that I didn't, and I know I asked the superintendent, is that something we didn't have in discuss is, we have some properties out there that are not used, and I would love to see those properties used in a manner that creates revenue, like mixed use, like housing for our employees that is going to generate revenue, not just one time, but over the years. And I would think, I know other districts have done that, and I think it would be great to have our staff living in our school district. So if that can be a report made, I'm looking at, Mr. Nguyen, because I know we do have some. As far as the KA configuration, I work at a span school, and I can tell you, it's an amazing thing, but it's hard, because... because there are certain things that have to come with that. And you have to look at this, you're having kindergartners and eighth graders on the same space. You have to think of bathrooms. You have bathrooms, either you have to configure them for elementary school or you have to add for middle schools, and you have to do vice versa. You are sharing everything. You are sharing the yard. You are sharing grass area. You're sharing lunch area. You have schedules that, you know, go from mid, like the morning till like lunchtime because you have recesses, you have those breaks for the middle schools. And staff too, like you have staff that's middle school, you have staff that's elementary, and trying to work around all of those and getting programs. Like I think Dr. Castro was saying, like, you know, getting people to stay after school to do middle school and do, you know, it's really hard. It's not an easy thing to do. It's not something that you could just say, "We're gonna turn a school into a K.A. configuration." You need furniture that matches them. You have to schedule like open houses, and then you have parents who have middle school. They've got, you know, kids and, they're four kids. They have to go to all of the open houses. They have to go to all the parent conferences. So it's a little bit tricky. And then the staff, I mean, yeah, it's hard. So that's not something that I would be supporting. Let me go back over here. And then just, I know that we have, I know Mr. Nguyen was talking about combo classes, and I don't like combo classes at all, but it's a reality. Even when you don't have declining enrollment, you still have combo classes. I just had a quick question. Two questions. Do our staff get stipends when they have combo classes? And do we give them like a para educator to work with them the whole day because they have two grade levels? And who can answer that?
There is a combination class's stipend per the contract with the teacher union. So we do have that. Para educator support, it depends on the class size. Usually, it's not in the contract, so the answer is no. We don't provide for that. However, we work with individual schools. If the class size getting larger, approaching 30 at the primary level, then we will look into supporting the school through the various options.
I think that would be beneficial because, you know, the teachers there all day long with two grade levels. I think they need support with the para, the majority of the time. I think a stipend is awesome. That's great that you get that extra money, but what they really need is support. They need an additional adult to be with them. So that's my recommendation. I think that's the only thing, Mr. President. Let me just. Oh, and also, we had a comment about Stowers furniture. Can we work with them, please, to make sure that they have the needed furniture that they need for the classrooms? I was a kindergarten teacher, and it bothered me that one of my chairs didn't match. I am like that. It has to be the same. It has, so I understand those kindergarten teachers, and I would like for them to have matching furniture.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another board member? Board Member Dr. Rios?
Thank you. I have a list, but I'm gonna jump right into the combo classes because I know that oftentimes we are told that because of declining enrollment. But I'm looking at Nemus, and they have three combinations, three combination classes. Can somebody speak to that?
Like I said, Nemus is a larger school, but they have the dual immersion program. So it's almost like a school within a school. So the combination classes you see there is a direct result of the dual immersion program.
I would like to think that they're not the dual immersion program. I mean, it's hard enough to try to teach a second language, let alone in two grade levels.
Yeah. We can have that information of you, but yes, yeah.
Dr. Rios, turn on your microphone.
So one of those combos at Nemus is in the dual immersion.
Yeah, I would really like us to consider that. Again, it's hard enough. I'm very bothered with seeing a lot of combo classes in our Area 6 and Area 7 schools. Especially, I mean, we just talked about the difference in curriculum when it comes to sixth grade, but I see a number of five, six combos, which again troubles me because some of these are, again, in schools where we already have students who struggle. I can't even imagine, you know, having, compounding that with combo classes. Okay, so I'll start off with my list. You know, yes, as board members, we represent all. Today, I'm gonna take a specific interest in speaking to issues. You know, we're selected by, we're voted in by areas because we know that our specific areas have specific needs. So I'm gonna speak to schools that are in my area, which, don't know, four elementary schools and one high school. The money. Oh, my God. Like, I had to calm myself down because I was just like, what is happening? So we know that a lot of our schools are in desperate need of resources. And so I was the one that asked about the budget pre-pandemic. Getting all worked up again. To post-pandemic, decided to add up some of the numbers. I was really troubled to see that the funding in some of the schools even declined. I decided to look at some of the Area 7 schools, same thing. So at a time when we were getting about $100 million, a lot of money, extra monies, post-pandemic, to service our students, to provide resources to our most vulnerable students in our most vulnerable areas, there was a decline in funding. I added the difference of funding 2018, 2019, which is the numbers at the, and I get it, some of these schools are half the population they were then. But that's what they used to fund us. That's what they used to give us extra money. And a lot of the money that was generated was by students who attended or were in these low-income areas, like Area 6, like Area 7.
Mr. Nguyen, can you answer the question? So funding declined?
So there was an average, let me go ahead and finish, and then he can speak to it, Mr. President. Thank you so much. $335,000 was the difference in funding.
What are you looking at?
I did my own calculations. So I added my Aloha.
Okay.
So I did specific. Aloha, the difference between 2018, 2019, and 2025 was plus $26,000. No, my next school.
That's more money.
Less money. So, sorry.
Wait, less money or more money?
So Aloha received $26,000 more funding. The next school that I looked at was Melbourne.
This is on page 14.
13, 14, 12 and 13. So I took the number, total budget that the school was allotted in 2018 was $275,000. In 2025, it was $301,000. You want me to go by? Melbourne received $9,000 less. Sorry. Yeah. Palms received $42,000 more. Willow received $13,000 less. Anyway, my point is, how, 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 how is it that we get millions and millions and millions of dollars to support our schools, to support our students, but yet the funding just doesn't add up? I think I added the schools in just my area, and it was a difference of $335,000. Some got more, some got less. A lot of it was for Artisia. Artisia received $292,000 more. But again, these are the students that should have been swimming in resources. These are the schools that should have had multiple reading intervention teachers, math intervention teachers, multiple psychologists. You know, in talking to some of the staff, they're coming to us and saying, "You know, we don't have the achievement that we want because we don't have the resources we need." Here's one proof that they're probably right. We talk about low enrollment in some of our schools. I've talked to some of these parents, and they give me the reasons, right? It's perception of quality, and quality can look different to a variety of parents. Some of them consider quality achievement levels. I like the idea of asking our parents that are choosing to send their kids somewhere else to do a survey on anonymous level, why are they leaving? My guess is, we know why, right? And it's gonna have to do with achievement. It's gonna have to do with the quality that they think their kids are going to experience at a certain school versus another. I talked about combo classes. I, to finish, would like to reconsider the list of schools that we have. We know that we have to close some of our schools. There seems to be this idea that this is going to allow for more money or whatever. We had a teacher talk about teacher salaries. I don't know where that comes from. I don't know why there's this idea that if we close one school, that's going to equate to higher salaries. I don't know. We've talked about the amount of money that we're going to be saving that's going to allow for this. Okay, there. Now, please speak to the money. Yes.
Thank you for giving me a chance to clarify the information. So if you look at page 14 of the report, I'll go down with the different schools one by one. So Aloha funding went up by $26,000, right? At the same time, over the five years period, their enrollment or ADA went down by 54 students. So even with less students, they got more money. It's on page 14, the very first line. So that's Aloha. So moving on to the next school that you brought up, which is Melbourne, they went from $441,000 to $432,000. They lost about $9,000. Yet, their enrollment went from $467,000 to $321,000. They are at 68% of what they were. In theory, they should have lost 32% of funding, but they didn't. They only lost $9,000. So if you look at the per-student funding, it went up. The same story could be said at Artisia High School. When the enrollment went down by 75 students, the funding went up by $292,000. This is just direct funding to the school for their discretionary use. This does not include any of the staffing provided to the school, any of the additional support, like you mentioned, counselor, EL counselor, reading specialist, math coaches, the writing center. All those support are paying separately by the district through the LCAP. So this is just money, again, given to the school for their discretionary use. This is not staffing-related. All those support still being provided by the district. So another school, if you want to look at Willow, is at the same site. The funding went up by $13,000 when the school lost 100 students. So the per-student funding at each and every one of those schools went up drastically. If you just look at the total funding, in 1819, we provide $8.8 million given directly to the schools. In 2526, it was $11 million. So every of those schools, doesn't matter the area, but most likely, the areas with higher percentage of UDP students, low-income and English learners, receive more funding per student than any other schools. Every, all the information is on page 14.
As they should, right? Because they generate millions and millions.
That is correct.
And so the 300, again, that's, and I would love, at some point, President Nishi, I've asked for an LCAP study session because I truly want to understand. Because in my mind, you know, yes, they got more money, but $26,000, I'm sure, you know, again, the funding was tremendous. We've, would you agree, Mr. Twan, that we've seen more money than we've ever seen before come into our schools because of unduplicated students?
Yes. Again, a lot of that was LCAP or ESTER money or COVID money. It was one-time funding that came to an end. The LCAP continues to go up because of our UDP percentages also going up. As I point out, on the certain schools, that their demographic has changed, and they have a higher percentage of low-income English learners now than 2018, 19.
I like to think that if we invested more in these schools, we probably wouldn't be having these issues. I think if we invested more in our schools, we would be attracting a lot more students. And we, you know, we're, a lot of people seem to think that every district is dealing with low enrollment. That is not true. There are districts that are seeing their enrollment grow because they are attracting students into their school district because of the programming that they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
So, Mr. Nguyen, the money that's listed here under total, that money follows the students?
Depends on the different program. So on page 13, then they explained that, right? So the learning recovery block grant, that's followed the students. Prop 28, that's by law, the funding calculated by the state. So Title I, that's based on your low-income students. LCAP, that's based on your UDP students. BAPA is a flat funding per level. LCFF, that's based on your actual ADA. So it depends on the program. The allocation for each program is different per, per the requirement of the programs itself.
So if the board decided to close a school and those students went to another school, that money would follow essentially somewhere?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have here the cost of running the actual school?
Correct. This is just discretionary funding per the school as requested by Board Member Rios.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have other questions after board members have their turn. Thank you.
Board Member Yu? Board Member Yu, and then follow with Vice President Noyola.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to thank the public for coming out to our board study session and giving your input, and it was a good thing. Thank you, President Nishi, for taking that action to get the public input and public comments first, and the questions, very legitimate input, and each perspective and everyone's comments were very important, very important. Now, as we, today's session is on consolidation, declining enrollment consolidation. And I believe this is going to be, what, the third study session, third presentation? Twan, is this third or?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, so this has given us a, you know,
Within the year.
Yeah, within a year. So we're taking a lot of time, probably more than any other, you know, topic, to fully discuss and fully give, be transparent, to give the public the opportunity to, you know, input. You know, a few things is that I hope that we can look at this as a consolidation, not closure of school. Because we are one unified district. And it's not one school competing with another school, but we're one unified school district. Although I am representing, you know, trustee area, what is it? Forget the number, but, yeah, two. Thank you. I'm in trustee area too, but we're one unified district. And let's try to look at this as a consolidation. If two schools in that same area, the number is equivalent to same as what it was, you know, 15 years ago, you know, for each school, then it just makes sense to consolidate. Not one school over the other. It's just a matter of utilizing, you know, one campus over the other. Because each school has its community over the years, and that's very precious. And I really appreciate, you know, Ferguson and Stowers community coming out to advocate for their students and community. That's really honorable and respectable. However, I would, as a board member, I think it is very important to take into consideration to be sustainable. Are we going to be sustainable at this rate five years from now or 10 years from now? Or are we gonna be able to bring this up again next year? Spend, you know, three board meeting sessions to study this and hire consultants again, right? Because we will continue to see the decline, because that's not something that we can control. We cannot control what's happening in Sacramento, what's happening in the state, or the, you know, in the nation, right? So sustainability is very important, and really appreciate some of the teachers coming out, taking ownership of this district. Another thing is functional. You know, ABC is one of the very few districts that is very functional because there is collaboration between the different stakeholders, right? So I would really like to see that continue and that we can be competitive too, can be competitive. Because we're not the only district that's struggling, right? Our neighboring districts are struggling. As I said, I receive flyers, even though all my kids are grown, from other districts like Glenna Park and different districts. So we are gonna be competing with other districts, and we want to look at that. And we want to be competitive. We want to attract best teachers for our children so that our children can be prepared when they go out. I have a question and a comment on page seven and six. And this is, what is the significance of the percentage of transfer-out rate and its relation to school consolidation? This data, I mean, I had to look at it like for a long time. This data, I mean, I had to look at it like for a long time, because this is a lot of numbers. And I'm not really a number person, but I'm looking at this number, for example, like Bragg has total of five hundred and seventy students, but, uh, the students that transfer from other schools in our district is hundred forty-eight. And then hundred six students coming from other district. And the percentage of transfer out is twenty-seven, seven percent only. But then there are schools like, you know, other schools, um, that has like forty percent, thirty-five percent transfer out. That means their students from that school is transferring out to other schools. Is that what it is?
Yes, ma'am.
So what is the significance?
So this is an informational point for the board. Uh, it's being requested, uh, due to our school of choice program. It just giving you the information as regard to the percentage of parents exercise their, their, the, you know, or take advantage of the school of choice program and, and, uh, under the law to, 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 uh, send their students or kids to, to the programs, to the schools that they, they, they believe that, that's best fit for them. Whether it's an academic theme or whether it's, it's other considerations. So this is just an information for the board. So, so you can see that. It's an informational point, uh, for the board. So each, each, you know, different, um, individual can look at the data and, and, you know, interpret it differently. But this is, as an informational item for the board. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I see a real relationship between the, the intra-district permit, the number of students intra-district permit and the students who come also from out of district. Which means that school has programs that's very attractive. And so ours, the, the families within our district want to go to that school as well as students from outside of district. Which is a positive thing, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And also, our parents have every right to use and utilize a school of choice, correct?
Yes.
That's just, that's a natural thing and we have policy in place. And another thing is that, I mean, uh, I really appreciate, you know, the dual immersion. I'm trilingual myself and speaking multiple languages and having multiple culture is really very valuable in life. And I would love to see that thrive and continue wherever it goes. Both, um, Chinese Mandarin and, you know, Spanish dual immersion, both, both, you know, languages. So I really like to see that too. I think all the board members do. So, thank you very much. That is all, President Nishi.
Thank you. Uh, before I go too far, and I very much apologize, there was the mayor of Cerritos that was here and also the city councilwoman, uh, um, Sophie Adse and I think Frank Yokoyama was here, the mayor of Cerritos. So I just wanted to recognize that and I apologize, they, they're not here now, but, um, I just got too focused on what we're doing here. Um, but I want to thank them for coming and showing an interest. Vice President Noyola.
Uh, thank you, President. Uh, thank you, Mr. Nguyen, uh, Dr. Castro, for putting this together. I also want to thank, you know, the community for coming out again and again, um, trying to share their ideas, you know, give their input, their, their perspective. Because, um, this decision, as much as we could make it a data-driven decision where we just look at data, um, you know, we are going beyond that. We are trying to be more data-informed. And when you do that, you have to look at specific context, you have to look at the history. Uh, you have to look at things that, you know, data doesn't really show or that can't really capture that effectively. Some of the things that, the ways I look at it is, um, the school works, you know, proposal, um, is very data-driven. It is looking at just the numbers and, and being very unbiased. And, and I believe that has been, you know, the way we've done things in the past. But I think, you know, getting the community's input is important because, um, this are community schools. Even though they aren't officially community schools, these are schools that, you know, affect all residents and all students. So that is why, when looking at the proposal, I, I couldn't go forth because of some of the context that I, you know, I hold. And, and that is, um, the majority of the schools being closed were Title One and not just Title One, but seventy-five percent or more, um, students are UP, uh, u- unduplicated pupils. And we know especially in Aloha and Ferguson specifically, those schools are at the edge of our district. And closing those schools or consolidating them, um, you, you move a lot of those resources to other schools. And in the transfer, you know, we've had this issue at our high schools where we have these resources that are meant for, you know, unduplicated students, but they are mostly used by non-duplicated. Or we have, you know, um, struggles trying to get, you know, those students to take those resources and, you know, persevere and do better academically. But I, I think some of the community has shared a lot of great ideas on how we can take some of these programs that are beneficial. And I think looking at the schools that have a lot of out-of-school, inter-district permits and out-of-district permits can, can prove a, a solution. I think looking at schools like Leo that has, you know, a hundred and eight percent capacity, you know, and replicating it. Um, you know, Whitney and Whitney Middle School and High School, you know, are number one in the state. I'm, I'm timid about separating the campuses and, 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 you know, because they have such a great relationship and that bond is with, from middle school to high school is, has shown it to be effective. But if we do go down that road, I think we could do something bold. We could do something to expand Whitney and, and keep that prestige, um, but also make it more accessible. I, I think moving forward, I would like to see, um, not just the school capacities, but all our facilities. I, I think moving forward, we can have a conversation on how we can create a grand master plan. And not just think about, you know, deficit, but also we, we talk a lot about asset, being asset-driven. Um, so I, I hope that we can look at these programs and on the other schools. Um, of course, we're going to have to make some decisions on, on how we can, you know, use our resources effectively. And eventually, you know, come to the decision of how we're going to move our facilities, uh, you know, in the future. So I, I hope to get a, I'm, I'm asking if we can have, uh, all our facilities, uh, reviewed and look at the potential, you know, cost savings of consolidating not just our schools, but also, um, I see on the, on the board, our adult schools, our other facilities here at, at.
Wait, so you're requesting we consolidate all the schools?
No, um, if we can look at the, the cost savings, um, Mr. Nguyen, if you can correct me if I'm wrong. The, the report we've had in the, the number I have in my head is the potential cost savings of ev- every elementary school is eight hundred and eighty thousand.
That is correct.
What would the cost savings be of also consolidating, uh, maybe some of our adult school classes or, you know, some of our other facilities? So just so we can have all the options when we make a decision.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions or comments? Did you want to do the follow-up? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I found a couple more notes. So I, I, I want to say I, I'm, I appreciate this, this study session because we just came on in November and I, I've been on the board previously. And I felt like I needed to have this discussion with my colleagues because when I came on, it felt very, I felt very pressured. Um, the, the community came on and they were very strong. And I felt like we needed to have this, to have a discussion, to really look at everything that we can do and looking at school consolidation as a last resort. And so with that, I, I was listening to my colleagues and, um, President Noyola, I think you said it correctly, like, our, our, I want to be a district that has heart. I don't want to just look at numbers and say, I'm closing this school because it's the lowest, it has low enrollment. Where I work is called Street Data. Um, you don't just look at data that's in front of you, you kind of take the whole picture. And so this is what I feel we're doing now, is we're taking the entire picture. I, I did, I, I would like to have a report if, if, if staff can do that and seeing if we can get Ferguson to be an IB school. I think we already have Stowers doing it. I think it would be a next step to have Ferguson and maybe eventually Nemis do that. The cost of what that would cost like, um, I think because I, I can, I'm going to keep saying this. That's one of our programs that we can bring students in, that will, that out-of-district students will come to us. We already talked about the cost of closing a school, the savings. I like having other, other facilities and knowing what, what we can or cannot do. I mean, but having information is good. I, I, we keep talking about Whitney and I have this idea and I want to, I want to pass it by you guys. Whitney is our draw. Every, you talk to everybody in ABC Unified, you talk to people outside of ABC, they know Whitney. It's the number one. Whitney is basically a closed school. We don't let out-of-district students in there, except for our employees, which I, I think. How about opening it up, but with the condition? They can come to and attend Whitney High School, but they have to come in elementary. And so as they go through our elementary schools and our middle schools, they can test and get points. And like, okay, you, you get an extra point because you actually came out of the district. You came and helped us fill in our elementary schools, our middle schools, and now you're going to test and you can come to Whitney. Just an idea. It's a way to bring in, um, students from other district. I think we have other, I'm not going to say their names because I don't want to. Other Whitney-like schools around us that do that, they open up their school to out-of-district. Um, and if we're thinking about doing things differently, I think that's something we can do that doesn't cost us a penny, right? They're going to come, they can come in elementary school where we need students and they can come through middle, they can come to elementary, they can go through middle school and then they can eventually go to Whitney if they test and they do that. Because we know that they, we know that families come and move to ABC Unified just to go to Whitney. We know that they do that. So why not give them the opportunity to come here and not have to move? Because coming to ABC Unified is very expensive, um, property is very expensive. So I would like to see if we can get some kind of report or the impact of, of doing that. And one other thing, and I think, um, Dr. Reo touched base is that all of our schools have amazing programs, all of them. We've all been to our schools. We know they have great programs, but not everybody knows about them. And some schools are better at PR, some school needs support. And I would love to have, uh, Scott, I love you, Scott, but I know you can't do this all. It, I know you can't work for all of our schools every single day. So I would like to see, uh, a cost analysis to get, um, someone to help, um, our communications director to do some promotion. Because I, I'm sorry, I am on social media. I'm on TikTok. And I'm on Facebook. And every once in a while, I see these amazing videos from Downey. Downey has, has gone up in enrollment. It hasn't gone down. And why can't we do what they're doing? It's PR. It's, people like to see videos of kids. It's just, it's what, it's what's happening now. So I would like to see if we can spend some money to get some students to come and really see what's going on in our school district. Um, I did talk to, I had a meeting with Artesia TD manager and the superintendent and the president, and we talked about, um, oh my gosh, I'm drawing a blank. Artesia is going to have the, the cultural fair and having a booth with the district there because we get people from all over. It's not just Artesia. And how about having, I said, how about having a booth there and promoting ourselves? Because that's what other school districts do. They go to fairs, they go to other, they go to other conferences and they're there and they're promoting themselves. We went to Cave, went to Cave and I saw LAU SD that was, was promoting themselves. I'm like, where's ABC Unified? I'll do it. I'll sit there. So we need to kind of step out of our comfort zone and it's going to cost money, but that's what other school districts are doing and I would like to see our school district doing. And if we're consolidating schools and we're saving money, then I'd like to see us spend some money to bring in some students. That, that's, that concludes it, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, um, in conclusion, I'd like to say a couple of words. One is thank you, community, for coming out and giving us some pretty good ideas, actually. Um, I like the idea of cross-marketing all our dual immersion classes and, and, um, th- there was a lot of good ideas. I think staff is going to look at some of the realities. I like, kind of like the idea of even marketing the Whitney to elementary. I don't know how that would work or if it's legal, but, um, you know, th- the thing here is, um, everything's on the table, right? This is consolidating schools is not, is just one of many things. It's not about necessarily just the money in this situation, right? Because there are many things that we can be trying to do that is very different. One of which is consolidating schools. It's not going to solve, if, if people think that that's going to solve the problems, it's not. So, that's from my wife. You, you know, I, I went to Juarez and it, it kills me because their scores are doing really good. They're, actually, they didn't have a summer decline. They, they actually kind of stayed the same, which is not what usually happens. But then I see the reality of what we're going to be doing here, which is combination classes. And I know that for those kids that are struggling, sure, technically, teachers can try to be at two places at the same time, but those kids that are independently studying, some of them may need help and they don't get that extra help, support and, and what they really need. They need actually the teacher. And, uh, they're not going to get that if we have these, these other things. It's, it's an issue of, of that. So all these guy ideas are, there's, somebody said Ferguson for IB, so I don't know. It was one of our more struggling programs, but that, that might be something we look at. We talked about LCAP. Um, I wanted to see here though, regarding the money, it looked like this money that we provide here is kind of mandatory. Like this, so the amount of money that we give, it's not like we just pulled it out of the hat. This, this ADA, this Title One parent money, that's specifically for that, uh, group, right?
That is correct.
So it's not like I say, oh, I'd like to put more or less in there because that would take from the other schools that are in the district. It's a specific legal formula that we must follow.
Correct.
And there's the Title One monies, that's coming by a formula from the federal government.
That is correct.
And the LCAP and the VAPA and all these are, so it's not like Dr. Zetlow is deciding that this school gets two hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's a formula. So yes, I would love to do more. I think they do that with other methods and funds that we have, but it's not necessarily within our jurisdiction to even do that. They, we've already been determined. So I hear we should have an LCAP study session. You've asked for it a couple of times. I think we can do an LCAP study session. That's a great idea. We will do that. I heard else, I heard that you want to bring back the original motion. Um, and any board member can do that and bring that back as an action item. So that is something that we can do as well. We will study all these other issues that we have here and we'll have our response from staff regarding all of this. But we can't, um, none of these talk about how we're going to address middle school. Askel, Betty, there's only two hundred and some odd kids at Betty. How can you operate a middle school with that view and have a broad range of classes that they deserve? With so few students? We have to, I, I mean, maybe at this next, uh, meeting, we decide to do less. But that would also mean that we're writing off Betty. That's, that's the reality of what the decision is. If we do part of whatever the plan is out there, um, we're writing off our middle schools. And that might be another conversation for our future board. But, uh, that might come sooner than we expect because we need to make some of these decisions. Event, uh, want to thank everybody for their great ideas. We will be coming back to this. Um, yes.
Uh, are we going to take action? Can we make a motion?
So there was already a request by Board Member McHatten, um, to put it on the agenda. It's not necessarily a motion that we vote on. It's a request. So just like you asked for an LCAP study session, we can have an LCAP study session.
Can I do a point of order?
And all of these members here asked for a, uh, this study session that we have here today. And so that's why we're having, it's not my choice. It is the board's choice. Yes, you may ask.
Just a point of order. I, I'm, want clarification. You asked Twan, Mr. Nguyen, if, um, giving some money to schools meant taking away from others? LCAP is a fund that we get from the state to fund schools. Twenty-six million, I think, was the last count, twenty-three?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, okay.
Yes.
So I like to think that the money comes from that fund. We don't take money from one school to give to another. Take money from this fund, twenty-nine million dollars, and fund schools that have more need. Correct?
Let, let me try and answer.
We don't take it from other schools.
We, we may take it from other programs. So if you choose to allocate more to the schools, then you just have less money to provide direct support. But at the end of the day, the LCAP funds go to support UDP students. It's just whether you choose and we, our district choose to spend, um, about three point four million to give to the schools directly, um, the LCAP money. And because we believe that, you know, they, they know, you know, how to spend the money best to support their students. But we have a lot of programs within that LCAP that the board approve every year, uh, the forty-item list or, uh, you know, The 40-item list or, you know, on the different program, the different goals, different specific actions with the different metrics to measure effectiveness. That actually has to approve, be approved by the county. So we are more than anxious, are happy to provide the study session of the LCAP in detail for the board. How that money is being used to support UDP students.
Yes.
Yeah, they're that, because, you know, we choose to advocate for certain programs for certain kids needing more resources. It doesn't mean that some get less, means that they get money that they are.
Well, well, we should be clear that you can't spend the same dollar twice.
Correct.
So, just to clarify, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, when you gave us this number, Whitney has over 1,000 students and Tracy has about 70, 80 students. And the fund that Tracy is allocated is all, like half, almost half. More than half.
That is correct.
And that money, for example, Whitney has 357,120. And Tracy has 179,617. And that money allocated, that fund allocated to Tracy stays with Tracy's students, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's just to clarify.
And this doesn't include any, like, one-time grants or grant that they got specifically? Like, you don't see the, the literacy reading grant for Ferguson on here? Because that's just outside of separate, equity and multiplier, that's separate.
And then some of the elementary schools, that's not Title I, doesn't get any extra fund either. That, they don't get Title I funds, so they have, they have to operate with less fund, right?
That is correct. And that's all on page 13?
Thank you. So the issue regarding Tracy will also be studied in relation to the staffing and, and adult school and those other alternate methods. Because we have to look at all these alternatives. It's not like we can just pick one. All of it's on the table. Yes.
In relation to Tracy, can we get clarification? Because I know it was, I, I think there's still misunderstanding, at least for me, as to whether or not we are required by the state of California to run a school. I get we have to run programs, but do we have to run an alternative school? I'd like clarification on that, please.
Yes.
So the ed code does state that we have to run an alternative school or classes. It has to be a separate, uh, CDS code and it has to have its own separate administration. You cannot just combine it, you cannot combine it with a comprehensive, because you cannot use the same rules as comprehensive. It falls under the rules for alternative education. Now, the other question in terms of if it has to be a school itself, board policy, BP 6148 has established that. They establish that the way that we do alternative programs in ABC is to establish a continuation high school. It's also the preferred model for the state of California, as Tracy was a model continuation school just a few years back. And that, that model continuation high school is because they are their own campus, because of the high percentage of needs of the students that attend there.
So I think the direction is that within the confines of the law, that we will look at ways to address the low enrollment at, at Tracy as well. Because I don't know that we need a, I mean, we have a principal, assistant principal. I don't know that the ed code requires an assistant principal, right?
Ed code just specifies that it must have its own administrative team.
Team, correct.
Yeah.
So, we can look at that. And that's part of the direction of this board here, too. So, any other comments? If not, oh, okay, one last comment.
Okay, I'm not clear as to how we're moving forward. I ask, I ask if the original proposal could come forward again. And I think we're, we're postponing the inevitable. We have to, we have to move forward.
So Board Member McHatten, your request to put it on the next agenda is appropriate. You are allowed to make such a request and that will happen. The original request from School Works will be on the next agenda. As will an LCAP study session, as will some of the other issues that were provided here as things that we need to really look at in terms of a comprehensive plan. So it can't, that will be on the agenda, but also these other ideas that we've received from the public, we can't just let them go. We have to also analyze them. And we're talking about marketing. We're talking about cross-marketing the dual-language immersions. We have to look at all of that.
Right. I mean, there's, there's a lot of great programs. I'm not, you know, saying that that's not true. There's a lot of great programs at a lot of, at a lot of different schools. But we have to start somewhere. And as we progress forward, reinvigorate the whole, the whole system and make ABC the district we want it to be.
We got a lot of work ahead of us.
We do, we do. So are you saying that my, my suggestion doesn't come forward as a consent item?
No, it is not a consent item, it would be an action item. And we would have to vote on that.
Okay.
Yes.
Point of clarification, cuz I think, I think we're, so the action item is going to be consolidation of the four schools. So the original agenda item is coming back.
That is what it looks like Board Member McHatten has requested.
Okay.
Which, which we are allowed to reconsider motions.
Is it gonna be the exact information? Or are we changing the information that was attached to it to this information? If you can clarify on that.
What she has asked for is what was originally the motion that was voted on. And if we bring that back, it will be as it is. Any changes to that, we would go through process.
At the meeting? Okay.
The changes can be made at the meeting to amend, make it bigger, make it smaller, whatever the board chooses to do. Is that clear what our next direction is?
Well, yeah, because that was one of my suggestions, that we, we take on new considerations and revise that list.
So that, this can be revised at the next board meeting? All right? Okay, one last one.
Yeah, I, I just because I know we had a public comment that it's gonna be on the agenda item again. Our schools, our staff are going to see it. Can we please make sure that we reach out to them and not tell them that it's happening? It's not happening because the board hasn't taken action. And I think that the, the, the message that our community's got was like, it's a done deal. It's not a done deal until we, as a board, vote for it. So the information that needs to be presented to our community and our staff is that this is an agenda item. It is not confirmed until it is voted on. So that message needs to be very clear to our community and our staff, that it's not a done deal. We still have to, we could still have discussion about it, we still have public comment about it. I don't want the message to be, this is on the agenda, this is what's gonna happen, let me talk to you about what's, what's coming next. We can't talk about what's coming next, because we haven't taken action yet. So if you could please make that very clear.
We can direct the superintendent to make that abundantly clear. Also, as, as you know, the decisions that we make here can be reversed at, at any point in time, right? So that, that is also part of what we have here. So, saying that, no further comments? All right. Motion to close this meeting at 9:05? All in favor, say aye? Motion is granted.